Welcome to City Hall. We will get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Tom Jones is here from the City Rescue Mission. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this opportunity that we have to come together and transact business on behalf of our amazing city. Lord, we thank you for each one of these council representatives that have such a commitment and dedication to their wards and the people in their wards. Lord, we pray that you would just give guidance and instruction and clarity and give them great blessing today, Lord, as they act upon the needs of this city. We'll give you the praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to take you back to 1992. Bricktown had a restaurant, a karaoke bar, and some enterprising business people said, "Let's open a Bricktown Brewery." And that was Bricktown's entire gamut of entertainment and offerings to come down here. Of course, we know that 10 years later, the canal would open; six years later, the ballpark would open; and now, 6 million people a year visit our entertainment district. But at this time, it was little more than an abandoned warehouse district when the investors came in and tried to make a go of it. And at their 25th anniversary, which we are now upon, we thought it appropriate time to award them with a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas locally owned Bricktown Brewery is celebrating its 25th anniversary on October 20th and is recognized for its food, beer, and as a great entertainment venue. Whereas it opened as the first brew pub in Oklahoma and is now the oldest operating restaurant in Bricktown and one of the oldest restaurants in Oklahoma City. Bricktown Brewery and Restaurants LLC operates 12 other restaurants spread across Oklahoma, Kansas, Arkansas, and Texas. Bricktown Brewery has been a leader in Bricktown and for the Bricktown Association over the past 25 years, and the general manager, Charles Stout, currently sits on the association's board. Whereas Bricktown Brewery has been a strong supporter of all the MAPS projects and played a role in the rise of a crumbling warehouse district into a successful entertainment district. Whereas Bricktown Brewery has employed more than 10,000 people over the past 25 years and currently employs over 800 company-wide. Bricktown Brewery presently has over 250 employees in their four restaurants in the greater Oklahoma City area. Whereas Bricktown Brewery has served over 7 million customers over the past 25 years. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby commend and congratulate Bricktown Brewery on the occasion of their 25th anniversary.
Let's show our appreciation and congratulations. 25 years is a long time. Buck Warfield and Charles Stout are here, the current ownership group.
Thank you. There's several people that should be thanked, and we should start with the McLean family that many of you may know, who had the vision to invest in Bricktown very early. And they were instrumental in bringing craft beer to the state of Oklahoma with the opening of Bricktown Brewery. We have, as representing the current ownership group, we have Jim Cowan, who was the original general manager and purchased the business from the McLeans. And we have Charles Stout, who is a newcomer. He only arrived about a month after opening in 1992. I'm the real carpetbagger here, but I've had the most fun I've ever had in a 35-year restaurant career right here in Oklahoma City, in Bricktown, with Charles and the folks as we've grown this from one restaurant to 12. And intentions, our intention is to double that group in the next five years. Hopefully, you'll have a Bricktown there wherever you live. But thank you for your historical patronage, and we're down there. We've recently remodeled again. It's better than ever. Please come see us. Thank you.
Here's to the next 25. Thanks very much. Thank you. And it is White Cane Safety Awareness Month. Vicki Golightly is here with Jay and Francis and Elaine and Pam. Come on up. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the white cane is used by hundreds of Oklahoma City residents who are legally blind in order to navigate our city and access its public places, schools, and businesses. Whereas with proper training, people using the white cane can enjoy greater mobility and safety by determining the location of curbs, steps, uneven pavement, and other physical obstacles in their path. Whereas the white cane has opened the doors of opportunity to thousands of blind Oklahomans by enabling them to travel freely and independently in their community. The white cane is now universally recognized as a symbol of blindness and improves the safety of blind pedestrians by alerting drivers when a visually impaired person is crossing a street, parking area, or other areas open to the public. Whereas Oklahoma law requires drivers to come to a full stop at least 15 feet away from a visually impaired pedestrian using a white cane or dog guide, and to take such precautions before proceedings may be necessary to avoid accident or injury to the person who is wholly or partially blind. Whereas to honor the many achievements of blind and visually impaired citizens and to recognize the white cane's significance in advancing independence, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved October 6, 1964, has designated October 15 of each year as White Cane Safety Day. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 15, 2017, as White Cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City. And he urges all citizens to observe this day by recognizing the significance of the white cane as a symbol of independence and enables Oklahoma residents with visual disabilities to participate more fully in the social and economic life of our state.
Let's show our appreciation for White Cane Safety Day. Yeah. And Vicki, we've come a long way in these areas.
Yes, we have. Mr. Mayor and City Council, audience, once again, it's a pleasure to be here. This year, the Heartland Council of the Blind, which is a chapter of the Oklahoma Council of the Blind, and the Division of Visual Services, which is part of the Department of Rehabilitation Services, are partnering in an event to commemorate White Cane Safety Day. We will be walking at Penn Square on Saturday, October 14, from 11 to 2:00. We invite any of you who would like to come out and walk with us. We've got some other people that will plan to be there, representatives from the Veterans Administration and the Oklahoma City West Side Lions Club. We have come a long way. You see us out at the mall, at movies. Those sidewalks, yeah. Thank goodness for the mayor's sidewalks. Anyway, we are part of your society, part of our society, and thank you for allowing us to celebrate with you this historic landmark day.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation again. And it is Arts and Humanities Month. We have a large group here. Why didn't everybody come up? The names I have here in front of me, Robbie Kinzel, Liz Eichmann, Brian Chambers, Allison Bailey, Amber Sharples, Ann Thompson, Ken Ferguson, Peter DeLisi, Julie Kurt, and Terry Cornet. Come on up. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, community, and states across the country. Whereas since our earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished because of the creative spirit and vision of our residents. We rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and our understanding of our nation and the world. The arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us. The insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city. Whereas cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities is critical to our city's growth and prosperity. To meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of our children and grandchildren and instill in them the same passion and persistence that has driven our city's progress and innovation. Whereas this month, we pay tribute to the tremendous power the arts and humanities to bring us together and expose us to new ideas as we carry forward this proud tradition. Let us celebrate the ways our city's rich heritage has strengthened our state and inspired our lives. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City. And he calls upon residents to celebrate the arts and humanities in our city and encourage greater participation by all citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in our neighborhoods, schools, and all areas across our great city.
Let's show our appreciation. Ann Thompson and Amber Sharples are here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the City Council and the Arts Commission for making this day possible. And this proclamation is so good. It helps us as organizations here that represent the arts and humanities in the City of Oklahoma City to do our work, which is basically to provide those outlets and venues for all of us to discover who we are as human beings. We often participate in arts and humanities activities we don't even know it, whether you're reading a book or going to a book discussion group, perhaps a museum exhibit, or even a community conversation that is based in that rich wisdom of the humanities disciplines like history and literature and ethics, that sort of thing. So keep in mind, when you are that curious human being, learning about the human experience, you are participating in the arts and humanities.
Hello. I'd just like to reiterate Ann's comments. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for your consistent and strong embrace and support of the arts. We know that the arts are vital to the education of our children, to the economic and community development of our cities. And we just saw that Oklahomans for the Arts released an economic impact study showing that the arts and the arts and cultural sector impact the state of Oklahoma with more than $872 million impact. So thank you for the leadership, and thank you for the Arts Commission for their consistent leadership for the City of Oklahoma City.
Gathered around, we have the many champions of the arts from across the state. So how about a round of applause for these individuals who helped make the arts what they are today. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much. We also have a special award to give out today. We have an employee who's been with us for 45 years. And I'm going to ask the entire council to come down and join me here as we present this, I guess, opportunity to note what a significant achievement this is. 45 years of largely working with members of the City Council, which is like three times what normal 45 years would be. This is well over 100 years of active work by one single person. I'm just going to start the microphone. Let them each have a chance to say specifically how much Debbie Martin's work has meant to this city and specifically to the council people that have come before us and those of us who serve currently.
Thank you, Mayor. Debbie, I'm, of course, the newest one here, but I can tell you, I just, I can't imagine trying to come in here and be able to hit the ground running without your support. And, you know, I always tell everyone, I'm like, the night of the election, we might have celebrated a little bit, stayed up kind of late. And, you know, I was getting this phone call at like 7:30 the next morning, saying, asking me what time I can be in here because we've got a lot of work to do. So, and it was Debbie calling me at 7:30, and I think I was up here at 8:30 and started. But Debbie, just thank you so much for everything you do.
Well, Todd's the youngest council member. I'm the oldest, and I've been here since 2001. And Debbie, thank you so much for all your support. Thank you for what you do for us as council and what you do, more importantly, for our citizens. And thank you for your Christian testimony. God bless.
I would just echo that. Debbie, thanks so much. Thanks for the 5:00 a.m. emails and decades and decades of service. I'm so grateful for everything you've done for me and all the education. You've been a mentor and a teacher, and I really appreciate that.
Debbie, you truly have a heart of service, and you make this job a lot easier for all of us, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the reasons why I am, no offense to my colleagues, one of the best City Council folks here, is because of the hard work of Mr. Debbie Martin. Todd, you talk about receiving that 7:30 morning call the day after the election. I think Debbie called me at 6 o'clock and told me that I had a 7:00 meeting. So I was definitely down here by 7:00. Debbie, I just want to say, I appreciate all the hard work you have given to the city. Debbie has served as the assistant to every Ward 7 councilperson since the 80s. So Debbie, I say thank you.
I think we referenced this, but I want to emphasize that Debbie's here every morning between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m. This morning, I missed last council meeting, and I came in early so I could kind of get caught up on what I'd missed. And I got here about 5:45, 6 o'clock, and I beat her here for the first time in my life. And what scared me to death was, I thought, oh, no, she's not going to show up today. So you're here today. We are so proud of you. I enjoy our morning visits where Debbie tells me about life, children, grandchildren, good times, bad times. I've learned so much from you. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Mayor, thank you. I think you've all heard this as well, but Debbie, I'm not sure I can do this. Debbie Martin obviously has a God-given talent of making every single person she meets, whether the circumstance is good or the circumstance is challenging, her friend. Everybody in this room that's had an encounter with her knows how much she cares about what she does, but how much she cares about you and your family and what's going on in your world, whether it's positive or whether it's challenging from time to time. Debbie and I were friends way before I decided to get on the council, and it came from a kind of a cranky circumstance. And we found ourselves running into one another all the time, shopping at some of our favorite little hideaways that other people didn't know about, and there would be Debbie. So it's important for you all to know that, other than the mayor, the very first person I called when I was considering filling Ann Simak's seat was Debbie, to make sure a couple of things, that she thought it was a good idea and that she would still be here to help me. And she's here, and she's helped me tremendously and become one of my dearest friends. You also may notice there are only two of us here in skirts. We have to have a little, we have to have a special little pact together. Thank you, Debbie. You're amazing, and it's going to take, as I've said, at least three people to fill that 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. slot that you take for us. So thank you.
For those who may not know, Debbie is the chief of staff, and so in that role, she works with each member of the council. But she's also assigned, as John mentioned, to a few of us on the City Council as our specific assistant, and she does a tremendous job. It's amazing how, you may not know this, but we have regular citizens who call on a regular basis with issues, and she remembers each person's name, where they live, what the issue is. And so her ability to work with individuals, never show any kind of frustration to them or to us, and while we don't have any members of the council with challenging personalities now, in the past, in the past, we have. And I think, I think her role, keeping them somewhat in line and under control, is as impressive as her ability to deal with the public. But she does a tremendous job, and I can't believe it's 45 years, Debbie. Yeah, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Occasionally, being an elected official at city government can seem overwhelming, and Debbie has to make sure that it's not. And I don't ever think I've seen her where I thought she was just overwhelmed by a problem or a situation or something we were going through. And it's largely because she's seen it before. About everything that comes past us has been here before, and she calms you, she puts you at ease, and then things move on and do very, very well. You know, this council is acknowledged nationally as perhaps the best city council in America. And I know each of us would want to make sure that Debbie Martin's role in that success is well chronicled. So Debbie, this is your pen for 45 years, but a very small token of our appreciation on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City. You bet. Thank you.
I want to thank this mayor and council. It's ironic, because Councilman White said to me, "How many council have you worked for?" And as I began to look back since 1987, when I came to the council office, probably about 30 to 35 people. And I've worked with several mayors, and I've really enjoyed this. I've counted it truly an honor and a blessing. There's nothing better than public service and serving your community and doing the things that are important to build our community. I've seen it when it was not a great place to live. And then I saw MAPS come along with Mayor Norrie, and I saw a vitality and an energy and just a love for our city come forward and people working together, that we are inclusionary and that we care about everybody equally. But I want to thank all the department heads. I could not do my job if it were not for you. And I appreciate so much the communication and the support that I get from each one of you because it's important as to how we serve our citizens and serve this council. I want to thank each member of this council, and Mr. Couch sitting back there, for the opportunity to do what I get to do every day. I'm blessed and honored to be in this position. And I'm going to stay a few more years. Not sure how long that's going to be, but it's just been a pleasure and a blessing to do what I get to do every day. Thank you very much.
I'll look for a motion on the appointments, and also, there's a notification there of Councilman Shadid becoming the vice mayor starting on the 11th. That's tomorrow, I guess. So you've got one more day. Is there a motion? Second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is a Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal for September 26, and for B is to approve the journal for September 12. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is revocable permits. I skipped one. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a few this morning, starting on page 24, under item nine, K1, the only item there, 229 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Then to page 25, under item nine, L1, B, 1810 North Nebraska, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item C, 1704 Northwest 10th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 1710 Northwest 17th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 229 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Moving to item nine, M1, 1910 North Nebraska, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item B, 1704 Northwest 10th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item D, 1710 Northwest 17th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to page 27, under item nine, Q1, we ask that that be stricken. Staff needs to reevaluate that application.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Item 6A is a request by the American Cancer Society to hold the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. That'll be October 28 in Ward 7. Is there anyone here representing that organization today? Shawna, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Shawna Horn, and my address is 1-8824 Stone Oak Road in Edmond.
Okay. Tell us about your Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk.
So we're in our third year, and as you guys are aware, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we'll be holding it in the Adventure District on Northeast 50th. And we're holding it because one in two women who are diagnosed with breast cancer call the American Cancer Society for help. And there's five ways, according to the American Cancer Society, on cancer.org that you can help protect yourself, your breast health. And the top three go with our walk. Watch your weight, exercise regularly, and limit your time spent sitting. So on October 28, we'll be helping women do that.
Wonderful. Love seeing us take direction for health. Any other comments or advice you want to give us about breast cancer awareness?
Well, we're excited to tell you that the death rates have dropped 39% from breast cancers.
That deserves a round of applause. How about that? That's fantastic.
Just between '89 and 2015. And also, we're in our second year where we have men around the city participating in our Real Men Wear Pink campaign. They're wearing pink. It looks like your tie is pink. Am I correct?
Oh, close.
Close enough. We're going to call it pink for today.
All right.
And they're raising funds to help with research and also promoting awareness by wearing pink all month. So we invite all of you guys to come. There'll be great things for survivors, caretakers. It'll be a great day on October 28.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 6B is a request from the Oklahoma City County Health Department to hold Open Streets OKC. This will be the event on South Robinson on October 29. And Darren?
Good morning, everybody. Darin Ransley, 11124 Kingswick Drive, Oklahoma City, just north of Lake Hefner. Open Streets, Oklahoma City. This is the fall event. We do have a spring event and a fall event. This is the fall event. We are looking at this moment at October 29, 2017. Our event will be 1:00 in the afternoon until 5:00. We're requesting a revocable permit from 11:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. The roads right this moment will be Robinson Road from Southwest 15th to Southwest 29th. Our aim is to have a health and wellness campaign, which will have between 70 to 75 vendors that will have very physical activities, zumba, dancing, hopscotch, various elements, if you will. We'll also have 25 food trucks that will have a healthy option. Last year, we had 15,000 people. This year, of course, we're hoping to grow it as much as possible to share that message of health and wellness. The partnership is between OCCHD and also The partnership is between OCCHD and also Prodigal. We'll be managing and executing. So we look forward to the event, and I know some of you will join us, so we, we hope to see you out there doing the zumba.
It does sound like great fun, once again. 15,000 people last year, and hopefully for a bigger crowd this year. I know it's a little bit weather reliant, but we hope people will come out, bring their dogs, bring their children. Lots of fun things to do. The streets are blocked off, food trucks, and an opportunity to, to take walks, meet people, and, and get healthy all at the same time. Can't tell you how much we appreciate the county board of health putting these events together. They're, they're just wonderful for us to get outside. How about a motion to approve item six B? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Item six C is a request from the Red Coyote Runners and Fitness Club to hold the Red Coyote Run Toberfest 5K. That'll be in Ward six. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm John Ozeland, and live at 2300 Brookside Avenue in Edmond, Oklahoma. The 2017 edition of the Red Coyote Running and Fitness Oktoberfest 5K is their fall grassroots running festival. It's held, this will be about the seventh year of the event hosted by The Running Store. Our third year, I think, in the Midtown location over there with, in conjunction with Fassler Hall and running up to Midtown. It'd be a Sunday afternoon event, and probably around 1,000 runners. The benefit, the running group, Girls on the Run, which celebrates the bonding sisterhood and, and groups of ladies running together, develop fitness and health in continuation. A lot of moms in the group staying busy and staying fit.
Sounds like a great event. It's in Ward six. Meg? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, item six D is a request with Assuming G. Coman Breast Cancer Foundation to hold the Race for the Cure on October 21st. And Elisa Pope is here. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? Elisa Pope, address 11913 Whitney Way, Oklahoma City. The, this year, the 24th Annual Oklahoma City Race for the Cure will be held on October the 21st, just right outside our doors over at Bicentennial Park. This year, we anticipate probably roughly over 7,000 to 8,000 participants in the race this year. One thing I wanted to note is that last year, from the Race for the Cure, we were able to provide over $400,000 in grants here locally to some of our local nonprofits to help with mammograms, breast education, and treatment programs.
Well, thank you for putting this event on. How can people sign up?
You can sign up online, and we will be down actually at Penn Square Mall starting next Monday, Monday through Friday from 10 to 8 with registration.
All right. Well, thanks for your work on this. It's in Ward six, Meg.
All right. Thank you, Meg.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six E is a request from the Oklahoma City Thunder to host Thunder Alley. And this is, takes up the entire season on not all of the events, but most of them. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're the most popular guy in the room today.
I don't know about that. Blake Broaddus, 2927 Nemets Boulevard, Oklahoma City. As we celebrate our 10th year with the Oklahoma City Thunder, we want to continue our tradition with our pre-game fan festivities located outside of the arena, on the north side of the arena between E.K. Gaylord and Robinson on Reno. It will begin three hours prior to tip, regardless of what the tip time is. It gives our fans an opportunity to interact with some of our entertainers. It gives people who might honestly be from Oklahoma who are around in downtown, an opportunity to see what the Thunder has to offer. And it gets an opportunity for our fans to get excited to support our team.
Sounds like great fun. And what time in the, before the games, does it start?
For a 7:00 game, it would start at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. 4:00 on a 7:00 game. If it was an 8:30 game, it'd start 5:30 or so. Okay. How about a motion here? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, and good luck. All right, item six F is a request with VI Marketing and Branding to hold the Carnadeum. Good morning. Are you Robert? Robert?
Yeah, Robbie Rapola, 125 Park Avenue in Oklahoma City, 73102.
Yeah, tell us about the Carnadeum.
Yeah, we're excited to put on our 15th Annual Carnadeum, which is a chili cook-off and block party on Park Avenue to benefit the United Way of Oklahoma. This year, it's on October 20th. It's another Friday morning from 11 to 1. We intend to close down the streets the night before to set up some tents and the stage so that we can move easily in the morning. There'll be access to 204 South Robinson throughout, throughout the night, and then the party is 11 to 1. So please block your calendars for that day. Come out, have some bowls of chili, and help a good cause.
All right, October 20th. Is that a week, a week from Friday?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. It's in Ward six, Meg.
It is. It's an incredibly fun day, and I'm so disappointed I'm gonna be out of town and I won't be able to be there. But everybody do come down. The chili's fun, atmosphere's great, entertainment's wonderful, and thank you for helping raise money for the United Way. Really grateful. Move approval, please.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Robbie. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the MFA. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, we do have two presentations this morning. On item AM, we will have an item on the, update on the Intermodal Hub that Eric Weiner will do. And item AN is a project on Northeast 23rd Street, and Jonathan Dotson is here to give a presentation on that project.
Mayor, if I could, I wanted to just mention 7N, ask a question, actually, and 7AY2.
You can do the presentations first?
We can. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You do have an item on the agenda today that's related to the intermodal transit hub, and wanted to just provide a project update to you to this morning with a lot of the work that's been recently completed, some of the things that you can expect to see in the next few short months, and then what the plan is over the next couple of years. As a part of the background to the intermodal hub, I think just to kind of show you some of the building's history, the, the hub was originally built in 1904, and it actually had a number of uses. It had a, it had an original use of being a freight station, but the station that we see today was actually built in its form in 1934 for a cost of one-half million dollars. And the architect was, was Harrison from Chicago, Illinois. It's had a lot of uses since that time. Most recently, and I think most of us are familiar, we applied for a Tiger grant to renovate the Santa Fe Station into what's now being called the Intermodal Transit Hub. Intermodal being it's gonna serve a number of uses, not just train, but something that will also serve our MAPS3 streetcar, something that will also provide for bus, other forms of transit like pedestrian, bicycle, possibly other type of rentals, whether it be Segway or, or other vehicles like that. Also the potential for taxi, Uber, and of course, other, other things like that. But this intermodal grant hub, or should say the intermodal hub Tiger grant, 13 and a half million dollars was received. We matched that with some local funding. We also had partnership with ODOT that matched to the amount of a million and a half. We received an ACOG grant for 2 million for a total project cost of 28.4 million dollars. And with that, we actually broke the project into four phases. And so two of the phases, I'm gonna update with construction photos today, phases one and two, and three and four. I'll show you what those future plans are. So this is phase one, and this was a lot of the interior remodels of the building. This was to preserve its historic significance. And as we worked through this, Tapp Architecture was our architect that helped make sure that we maintained a lot of the finishes. This was one of the early renderings that we showed. I'm showing that intermodal hub status where you actually see the bus drop-off and loading areas. You can see the Amtrak train on the top of the elevated tracks. You can actually see a little bit to the left of that drawing, the MAPS3 streetcar coming down that southbound lane of E.K. Gaylord, just at the upper-left portion of that drawing. This portion of the project was 4.9 million dollars. Construction's about 90% complete. It's wrapping up as we speak. Jim Cooley was the contractor. This is the phase one floor plan, and so I've color-coded this, and we're gonna talk about four different spaces, or at least major areas of space, for the tenants that are included as a part of the station. Amtrak, which is obviously one of the current users, their space is identified in the blue area, and this provides that access to the upper-level areas where the pedestrians can actually load and unload off of that train. That accommodates about 5,000 square feet near the main entry for access and allows all those pedestrians to come and go from the station. The second space is in orange. This is gonna be HMS Ferries. This is also known as the Oklahoma River Cruisers. They currently operate in, it's gonna be more an operation here that you're gonna see in November of this year, so they'll actually use this as their primary space. Also in orange is the Bicycle Transit System, or the Spokys. It's about 1,500 square feet of space. It, too, will begin operations in about November of this year. Looking at the light blue near the bottom of the drawing, this is a future space, December 2017 to about a March 2018 implementation. It's Destination Oklahoma and the Scissor Tail Gift Shop. So these are new spaces that are currently being finished out. Factor 110, the region's leader in the event and destination management, will be launching both of these as initiatives for the new building. And then final, Pinketzel at the bottom, which is in the pink, obviously a current tenant. They operate at about a 4,000 square feet of space. They've recently renewed a new five-year lease, and so they'll continue to operate a store that offers cupcakes, candy gifts, coffee, and party services. And so one of the things that you'll see is it really is a multi-use facility, and there's a lot of different tenants that are in that space, and there's also some room for growth. There's about 1,000 feet remaining in the main hall that could be used as multipurpose space. These are some of the photos, and I think one of the things is we noted, this was a renovation of a building, and the exterior previous to this photo was really dirty. There's a lot of black material that was starting to adhere to that old limestone. And so this is a west entrance that is really familiar. It's the center stone of the building. But it, all that stone's been cleaned, and so you're seeing that today. You're seeing a renovated exterior and interior to the intermodal hub. This is an artwork piece that's been installed. This is connectivity. It's different stainless materials using cattle guards and the different methods of transportation throughout Oklahoma. Marsh Scott was the, the artist, and she's from Dana Point, California. So this is one of the art pieces that Robbie Kinzel and, and her staff have helped make sure that we get installed in the new facility. This is what that looks like at night from the exterior, so you can actually see this from, from outside the building. Moving to the interiors, what you're gonna see is a lot of the preservation of the historic finishes. And so you're seeing a lot of those interior limestone walls. You're seeing a lot of the terrazzo floors that have been restored. This is the ticket counter and the new newsstand. Moving to the main hall, you'll see a complete renovation as well. You're gonna see the decorative ceilings. It really is probably a space that you're gonna need to see in person to really appreciate. It's very hard to photograph some of these just to really get you the true feeling of what this building looks like. This is the new office spaces, and you can see they've had a mix of some of the new with the old, but again, as a part of the design, maintained a lot of its character. And then this is the future space. And so as we talked about those future build-out spaces, these are the spaces that are currently being renovated, as I mentioned, for those new tenants that'll be coming in over this next year. But there was quite a bit of open opportunities to be able to place different vendors here. This is the new exterior gate. This helps hide some of the trash surfaces at the building so that you're not gonna see just dumpsters and things that are part of building operations. And this is some of the connectivity when we start talking about the pedestrian walking spaces and providing some level of covered platforms for those that just might be waiting in the area. This is the upper section. This is what you see up top, and there's been a lot of work on the roof of the facility, which has had a history of a number of leaks. This is also a place that has opportunity for future expansion, and so there's been talk about regional transit. So what I will share is that the elevated portion of the track could be expanded to accommodate additional tracks in the future. Not as a part of this project, but something that could happen later. Moving to the phase two portion, this was 2.1 million dollars. Again, Jim Cooley was the, the contractor. This work is also nearly complete, but now we're talking about the exterior space, not the building specific, but we're talking about the plaza to the north and the plaza to the south. It will finish up here this next month. This next slide is showing that north plaza, so to get your bearings, E.K. Gaylord is at the top of this drawing, and Sheridan is to the right. And this is that completely remodeled and renovated outdoor space that has a lot of the Project 180 features that you find in downtown. So you're seeing a lot of new tree wells, you're seeing a lot of re-marked and restrike parking areas. One of the things that was also done was the curb was moved out away from the building to provide for more space. And so we actually have more space than what was previously provided. You can see the grand entry where it says West Entrance Plaza. The old street literally came up to that front step, and you can now see that we've got a lot of buffering space for pedestrians that are entering and exiting the building. This is that west plaza, so again, Gaylord is at the top of the drawing, Reno on the left, Pinketzel's in the retail space on the, on the left. We've been able to open up that parking area much more to be more open. We've also provided some new drive access onto and off of E.K. Gaylord just to help more circulation. These are some of those photos as we're working through that today. The pavers are going down, the poles are going in to start the signalization again at Reno and Gaylord. You're seeing a lot of construction activity there. These are some of the tree planters that are getting ready to receive some of their trees. And again, a lot of these construction materials will be removed from this site here this next month. This is the exterior of the completed spaces. Just some more construction update photos, just showing that progress. I know a lot of this was really difficult to see. We've recently, in the last few weeks, moved traffic to where you're now adjacent to the building instead of the far side of that, so you're starting to see some of these in person that's been blocked off for the past year. Now, these last two phases, I'm gonna mention, I'll update very quickly, is phase three and phase four. They've not yet started. The construction timeframe for these is 2017 to 2019. Phase three specifically is the finishing of the pedestrian tunnel that's gonna connect downtown to Bricktown through the Santa Fe Station. We're working with BNSF and finishing up some final plans, and this is a project that ODOT will actually bid as a part of their million-and-a-half-dollar match to the project. So as we get ready to move this forward, the plans are complete, and as soon as we have those final approvals in place, we'll be able to start this work. So what you can expect is that there is a tunnel inside the Santa Fe hub now that stops about halfway under those tracks. This tunnel will then open that up and bring us all the rest of the way into Bricktown. So you'll actually have a place to go through the, through the tracks as opposed to having to use the at-grade crossings either at Sheridan or Reno. On the phase four, this is work that would be the final phase. It will take about six to eight months to finish. We do have to have the pedestrian tunnel open before we can complete this. Estimated cost is about 2.6 million. But this will open up the entry into Bricktown, and you'll see the addition of a grand staircase. It will also have ADA accessibility through ramps. It preserves the existing fountain that's already there at the Bricktown Canal. But again, it makes that additional pedestrian corridor into and out of the intermodal hub, and then if you go through the hub, in and out of downtown. So the overall schedule, nearly complete on phases one and two, phases three and four. We expect to hopefully be able to begin very shortly here in the next few months to the early part of next year. One last update, Project 180 is proceeding very well, so this is specific to E.K. Gaylord. So we're looking down from the air, on the right, Sheridan, on the left, Reno, and right in the middle, E.K. Gaylord. So some of the other features that you can expect, and it's just not a part of the intermodal hub, but all the activity that you see in the area is adding a median to E.K. Gaylord. It's reducing the overall road width from six lanes to four. Now, it will still have turn lanes at the intersections. It also has a, a median opening to allow access into and out of the Cox Convention Center Garage. It also provides for the streetcar, which will operate on the top of this page. It'll be a southbound streetcar operating on E.K. Gaylord. You can also see the pullout and drop-off areas for the intermodal hub, but all of this work is also wrapping up here in the next couple of short months, so we can expect to see all of these improvements very soon as well.
And the ribbon cutting for Santa Fe is December 7th, and a family-friendly open house is December 9th.
And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have about the intermodal hub.
Any questions?
Your honor, I've got two. One's directly related to your presentation, and then the other is somewhat related. But how confident are you with respect to ODOT's contribution of that 1.5 million dollars will come through on time?
So all indications are that there, there are no issues with that. We're, we're regularly speaking with ODOT, not just on this project, but a number of city projects. So we've heard nothing of the contrary to suggest that there would be a problem at all. We're moving forward with this very quickly.
Okay, on the same subject, though, moving a little bit further south to the Boulevard, are we still on track?
For November.
And nothing's been said to disrupt that?
They've not only not, they've indicated that it will happen.
Good. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric.
And next up is a presentation on a project at Rhode Island and 23rd Street.
Good morning. Jonathan Dodson, 1220 Northwest 20th Street.
Sandino Thompson, 1723 Northeast 19th Street.
Okay.
So, good eve, or good morning. Thank you for having us today. I'm going to give you a little brief overview of sort of where this project came from and kind of how we got started. My name's Sandino, as I mentioned before, and I'm a partner with the Pivot Project and Jonathan on the project to revitalize this area of Northeast 23rd Street. I moved away, grew up in Oklahoma City, moved away, decided to move back about eight years ago, and since the time that I moved back, spent a lot of time really trying to figure out how I could use my talents here at home versus the things that I was doing abroad. In 2013, myself and a lot of other community leaders, creatives, entrepreneurs, others on the northeast side, really start talking about what we could do to bring the northeast renaissance, or sorry, to bring the Oklahoma City Renaissance that a lot of members of this esteemed body have presided over the past 20 years to the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Through a lot of trial and error, a lot of conversations, we tried to figure out what it would take to sustain urban redevelopment in the minority community, and over the last 30 years, my experience in Oklahoma City, I've never seen the sense of unity and purpose that we have had the past few years on getting projects like this started. So about three years ago, I met Jonathan Dodson, just as he was starting with the Pivot Project, and as we got to talking, he explained to me what they were trying to do with development and redevelopment in the urban core, and we had the opportunity to talk quite a bit about the opportunities that myself and others thought existed in northeast Oklahoma City for redevelopment in that part of town. Initially, I didn't think much of the relationship. I thought that, and no offense to Jonathan, but I thought, I thought that they would be a group or a team that could teach us some things, we could learn from them, but there've been a lot of folks who showed up on the northeast side with a lot of promises, and we really haven't seen things follow through. So I kind of, I took him at his word that they were interested in helping us figure some things out, and I kind of left it at that. A few months later, he reached out and the rest of the group at Pivot and said, hey, we've kind of been thinking about the last conversation, the past conversations we've been having, and we think that there's an opportunity, we got an idea, we want to talk to you about it, but it's going to take us partnering with you, bringing other folks around the table, to really do it right. But we're going to throw everything we can at it if you, if you, if you be interested in partnering with us to come over and do some work on the northeast side. So our partnership was born from those conversations about three years ago, and it culminates in the project that we're going to talk to you about today. After a lot of creative effort, after a lot of starts and stops, and after a little bit of luck, we are in the process of renovating 18,000 square feet of Class A medical space that Oklahoma City Clinic will move their primary operation and headquarters to, and then opening up a, sorry, 10,000 square foot of that for Oklahoma City Clinic, and then 18,000 square foot that we hope to open fully leased with the other 8,000, another local community-based healthcare provider. This project's going to provide critical access and increased access to healthcare on this part of town, but it's also, we believe, will lay the opportunity for transformative change and the kind of project that will spur investment from, that we've seen happen in other parts of the community when these kind of projects come together and get started.
Thanks, Sandino, and thank you, counsel. I wanted to start just by thanking a couple people that have been a part of this, and some of them are here today and some were not able to make it, but Citizens Bank of Edmund, who ended up doing the construction financing on this, Councilman Pettis for his continued support of the project, Michael Owens and Kathy O'Connor and the Alliance, the Perrys, Mr. Kevin Perry and Mr. Russell Perry for their support, Ayesha Larkpoor, who is our realtor on the project, the Black Chamber Northeast Renaissance, the Lynn Institute for its study on health and the needs of the northeast community, Oklahoma City Clinic for being willing to pioneer. With us, Steve Mason, who I'll explain his role in just a second, Lingo Construction, Miles and Associates, and Gardner Architects. And so, I start thanking a bunch of people because it's actually taken a lot of people to do this, and as Sandino mentioned, we acquired or were able to get two parcels under contract last year in October, and we immediately sat down with the Alliance and with the city and started talking about what we could do, and we realized quickly that we needed to, we needed to get a tenant in tow. And so, really what you're seeing is you're seeing Phase One of a two-phase project, and so Phase One, Sandino and I were involved with kind of a Maps for Neighborhood, trying to see what the community needed, and one of the things we heard on the east side was this need for access to healthcare. And so we decided that Phase One, if we could find someone crazy enough to join us, we would go do Phase One as healthcare, and so we started talking with Scott, and I think in probably March or April of last year, we were able to get a lease signed. They signed a 10-year lease for 10,000 of the 18,000 square feet, and so we assumed fairly quickly we'd be able to get financing, and this thing would be ready to go. We had been talking with the city, and we really didn't have any luck, and so I think if you were to combine all of the difficulties we've had with getting finance for all of our projects, and you were to combine it all together, it still did not equate to how difficult this project was to find financing. And so thankfully, after some stops and starts and almost approvals, we were able to sit down with Citizens Bank of Edmund, and they basically said, if you are able to bring someone else to the table to guarantee the loan with you, then we'll step up to the plate. And so, we reached out to Steve Mason, whom I think many of you know, who's a pioneer, but has an incredible philanthropic heart as well, and so he agreed to join us in this venture, and so we gave away some of our ownership to bring him in, and so he agreed, and Citizens Bank of Edmund, we were able to close on the construction loan about two weeks ago or three weeks ago. And so, one of the things that we realized in this process, and that the biggest challenge that banks have right now is a lack of comparables on the east side. So we heard that from every bank that declined us, was we just don't have any other buildings to look at right now that have been redone like you're trying to do, and so our hope is that with Phase One, which is, you see, the second phase, which we hope to bring to you in the future, which will be primarily retail-oriented, we've got, we think we're going to have about 80% pre-lease when we bring that to you, will be, those two developments will provide the comp, so that if you're an entrepreneur on the east side, or if you're wanting to do your own thing, the banks don't have that as a reason now not to finance projects in the future. So I think that's pretty much it. OKC Clinic wanted to speak as well, their CEO, Scott Potter, but I didn't know if you guys had any questions or anything like that.
Any questions for Jonathan or Sandino? Okay, sure. Yeah, Kathy, you want the Oklahoma City Clinic to come up next? Is that your preference, John?
That's, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Have them come up.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. John expressed thanks to a lot of people. I'd like to express my thanks to John because he's worked tirelessly to help us get this project accomplished. So the Oklahoma City Clinic will turn 100 years old in just a couple of years. For the last almost 40 years, has been on the OU Health Science Center campus and a building that we owned there. And as our practice has evolved, we've evolved into something that we very much want to be a part of a community. We don't want to be in a big health center-type setting. And so when John approached us about being on the northeast side, there were certainly some things that were very appealing about that, because a large portion of our patients currently come from the northeast side. There were also some things that were scary about it because of the, some of the perceptions of that area, and while a lot of our patients come from there, a lot of our patients come from northwest Oklahoma City and south Oklahoma City and areas east, you know, all the way down to Tuttle. So it was really important to us that it be a facility that was as nice as any facility in Oklahoma City, and that we weren't just going to be there on an island, but that this was going to be the first step in additional development that made the neighborhood a very welcoming place for people from northeast Oklahoma City and for all of the patients that we serve from, from all over. So I would just like to, you know, say we're very, very excited to make this move. We're very excited about the commitment that the mayor, that Councilman Pettis, and that others have made to show us that you really want us to be there and that you're going to help us be successful there.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your commitment, too.
I don't know if you guys have seen the slides, but we can kind of walk through them real quick if that's, that's helpful. The, we, you know, I tried to put in the first slide basically just the challenges that we had going into this, and then the opportunities that we think this redevelopment will occur, and so, you know, most of what you see on project challenges are, we've faced some of that in some of the buildings we've gone, but not in the magnitude that we've had on this, and so from the environmental issues to misperceptions, to OKC Clinic, because they agreed to work with us and not go into the northwest side, we had a limited time to be able to move them, so we actually have to have them in their building by May. So it's a really fast turnaround for us, and then they're just, like I said, there was no comparables in the area, and so this is an 18,000-square-foot redevelopment, and then to the east of that will be another 18,000-square-foot redevelopment, and it'll have various users. We've got two healthcare-related users and then restaurants, and it'll be about 60% to 70% minority-owned businesses that will be going into that space.
So Phase One, complete, second quarter of 2018?
Yes, sir. So they'll, and, you know, we have an LOI that's been signed for the remaining 8,000 square feet, and so we have to go through that process to make sure that we can get a lease executed, but our hope is that, you know, the opening of that remaining 8,000 square feet will be shortly thereafter.
Okay. Ed, did you want to ask questions?
What does your development fee, the present? That are investing? For the owners? What does your management or development fee?
I think it's 6%, but I think it's in the packet that you guys have, so I can...
I didn't see it in the handout we got, but... Is it about $300,000? Would that be?
Less than that.
Less than that?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe can I ask Kathy a question?
And it might be helpful if we just kind of walk through some of the summary of what you're being asked to approve this morning. So the total cost of this first phase is $4.3 million, and the allocation that we're requesting is a $1.3 million allocation from the Northeast Renaissance TIF District. At this point in time, the Northeast Renaissance TIF District does not have any available funds. So the second part of the resolution is authorizing an internal loan from the 2007 General Obligation Limited Tax Bond Fund program to fund this allocation. In the redevelopment agreement, there are certain, there are certain requirements or opportunities for the city and requirements of the developer. First of all, the goal is to recover the principal amount within the 15-year, within a 15-year time period. We have multiple sources that we look at, the taxes that'll be paid by this development are the primary source of the funding of the increment, but then there could be other incremental revenues from the rest of TIF 9 that could also help this project. And then there would also require some annual general fund support over that 15-year period. It's estimated that if this project performs at the very conservative estimates that are in the pro forma right now, that that amount could total $600,000 over the life of the TIF. But if the project performs better than anticipated, there are certain stipulations in the redevelopment agreement that allow for the city to participate in the upside. So if, if there's participation in cash flow, if they exceed their annual rent threshold, there's participation on the project upon sale, if they sell it and realize any gains, then we participate in that. And then there's, participation is eliminated if the developer refinances and repays 45% of the provided TIF upfront. The agreement provides for no flip, no flipping of the project for 10 years, and then there can be no material change in the ownership group. The refinancing cash out would eliminate, can remove the participation requirements, so we would get our money back, and then we wouldn't be able to participate anymore. So those are just some of the stipulations that are in the redevelopment agreement. I think I would say that, I think we recognize that this is kind of a first project. It's the second project in TIF 9 that we've allocated funding for, but all of these projects are extremely challenging. The first project had the advantage of being, you know, owned by a long-term owner who was doing the renovation and funding those renovations himself. He didn't have to go borrow money from a bank. This is much more like a traditional real estate deal, and we're beginning to see the challenges in the northeast community with these kinds of projects. The lack of comparable, you know, comparison properties, transactions, makes it very, very difficult for banks to look at these kinds of projects, and we're glad that Citizens Bank of Edmund was able to step up and help them. So I'll be glad to try to answer any other questions, if you'd like me to.
The gold, this is coming from the gold, the job creation $75 million?
It is coming from the General Obligation Limited Tax Bond Fund, but the fund does allow for, or the, for loans.
So are the loans subject to the same conditions that we've heard about? When we give our money to Continental and Tesla, that it has to create a certain amount of...
No, this is, it's actually an internal loan, so, I mean, we're loaning the money to, to the TIF District.
And you can do that out of the remaining...
Yes.
...$500,000?
Yes.
If I was aware, if you could do that, what else would we provide loans for?
What else could we provide loans for? We could, I mean, the lawyer's back here, so he may have to ask some, answer some of this, but it's my understanding that we can make loans for economic development and community development projects from the Golt Bond Funds if we wish to, but that's a council policy decision, and by adopting this resolution today, you would be stating that that's your policy to make this internal loan. You've made other internal loans from the Golt Bond Funds for the Softball Hall of Fame, so it isn't like this is a precedent necessarily.
The economic development package that was just passed in September, would you be able to do the same kind of internal loans with those?
You could.
So it just, it seems like, we've done this, yes, for years, now we're kind of expressed negotiations, but I just want to, if the council has a policy that we want to include healthcare access on the northeast side, and we've talked about grocery stores for a decade, there is more, so that's, that's a new thing. It seems like at some point you would put out an RFP, when you're putting this much money into it, this is 30%, 1.3% going in. I'm not aware that we've ever done that much for a set allocation. I think the most is 10% maybe for 21c. Usually it's in the 6% to 8% range, so we've never done something like this before, where we're putting, taxpayers are putting in basically a third. So at that point, you start getting into, you subtract out the development fee, a third, I guess, you're starting to get into what's called corporate service, where the taxpayers donate the capital and the owners keep the profit.
If you, once you're donating that much capital, once you're into the 30% range, should you not put out an RFP and say, it's a policy of the council that we want to increase healthcare access on the northeast side, or we want to do a grocery store, or whatever, and we're going to put out an RFP and let everybody bid for that? I mean, here we have four Caucasian investors who are going to own this entity, find it with a third of the capital by taxpayers, that couldn't be done without the taxpayers. I mean, perhaps minority interests would want to bid for something like this on the northeast side, and if you just opened it up and said, the council, we want to increase healthcare access, we're going to donate, this is 1.3 million for what, Phase One, and then Phase Two comes when? 90 to 120 days later?
You might want to answer that.
Hopefully 90 days.
So this is just part one, this is just the first 1.3 million, then there's going to be another sizable allocation from the taxpayers. Then, there's going to be another sizable allocation from the taxpayers. So, it just seems like as a policy, if we want to do a grocery store, or we want to increase healthcare access, let's open it up to everyone, not have Caucasian investors buy buildings on the northeast side, and then, once they've already owned it, then come to us and say, "Hey, we can't make this work without record-setting, you know, precedent-setting, never been done before amounts of taxpayer dollars."
I certainly think that's an approach that we can look at and that we've considered in the past. And typically, we've tried not to compete with private sector developers on these kinds of things. But we could certainly look at a process where we issue an RFP to identify developers for certain high-priority projects that the city council would like us to take on.
Well, Kathy, I also, I mean, I don't think there's been anything quiet about our desire to use the northeast TIF to create development. I mean, we've talked about a grocery store, as you said, for years and years, and we finally got one. We've talked about needing to improve health outcomes, whether it was through the LYN study or other things. It's an obvious need, and, you know, I think...
You know, I think part of the challenge with the Northeast Renaissance TIF right now is there are no TIF revenues. So, it's really difficult to try to figure out how you can leverage that into investment. So, but we can certainly look at it. I mean, it can be, you know, kind of a pay-as-you-go approach, which is really the policy that the city council's adopted for that TIF district anyway.
Kathy, how would you say, so now that the TIF district is in effect going into debt, how does that impact future development on the northeast side?
Well, since this is an internal loan, we try to look at each project individually on a standalone basis. So, this internal borrowing would not, would not go against any future development proposals that we might see on the northeast side. Now, would we like there to be other development that generates excess increment so that we don't have to dip into the city's general fund? Absolutely. So, I think that's the, you know, that's our hope, is that we do start to, you know, from this development and some of the other things that are beginning to happen, that we'll begin to see some more, some more investment that generates excess increment that can then help, help all of these projects be more successful.
But how, so for phase two, I mean, there's no funds. So, are we, we're going to borrow?
It'll be a pay-as-you-go approach, and we'll look at that.
When they come back to us in, sorry, when they come back in 90 to 120 days, we're going to borrow more for phase two?
I don't anticipate that at this point in time. Is it, are we? Okay.
There's no money in the TIF district, so presumably, you have to borrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, I want, we probably need to keep in mind that on, on pretty much all of our other TIF districts, we have lines of credit and outstanding borrowing. So, that has been the policy of the council in the past. We tried to take a different approach with this TIF district, but at the beginning of the increment district, sometimes that's very difficult to do.
Last question. If you're, the taxpayers are putting in such a massive investment, if there's a need for public health and you couldn't find, could the, could the city do this on its own? I mean, if you had, you know the Oklahoma City Clinic has to move, you know they want to come. Can, it's not that much further of a leap. But if, we've tried for a decade to do a grocery store. Can the economic development team, can we not, if we, if we identify a public health need, could the city just do it on its own with this size of investment? I realize it would be more...
Yes, I think we could.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Kathy on the financing? Everybody clear on what we're voting for today?
Just to comment, I think Ed brings up some important points to consider. And this is how I look at it. I think everybody's aware of the struggles that have occurred with development activity in northeast Oklahoma City. And if we're not willing to kind of prime the pump in a sense and be the first one to make that investment, it may be decades before we see development occur without this kind of assistance. So, but for that fact, I would have the same concerns, Ed, that you've shared and, but I think something has to be done. And so far, this is the first thing that's been proposed to us. And I'm willing to take a certain level of risk. But I want the developers to understand, we are looking and will hold you accountable to make sure this is as successful as it can be.
All right. Other comments or questions?
I would say a similar thing. I mean, I really respect the tenacity and the hard work. This is as clear an example of the but-for that we've seen. This project would not happen, could not happen without a partnership. And the city's the right partner here, I think, to help. So, you are going to be held to a very high standard of success because this needs to be the pebble that will cause that ripple effect that we've seen in so many other neighborhoods. It's a really significant investment, and you guys are, have worked really hard to make it happen. So, we appreciate that partnership.
John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, when I first got elected in 2013, I started pushing for economic development to occur in northeast Oklahoma City. I grew up in northeast Oklahoma City, still live in northeast Oklahoma City. A couple of years ago, the planning department brought in some consultants to talk about for housing. And in that study, it pointed out several things. It showed that minorities in our city are denied mortgages on a higher level than any other race. It also pointed out the small business loans in northeast Oklahoma City, the amount of small business loans in northeast Oklahoma City compared to other parts of our city. Northeast Oklahoma City, it's sad to say that it is a red line, red line district, meaning that it's been difficult for banks to give loans in northeast Oklahoma City. I believe this particular development passes the but-for test. And it's been difficult to get development to happen in northeast Oklahoma City. We remember the days of urban renewal back in the 50s and 60s and partially the 70s, how it had some positive, but yet some negative impact. Urban renewal in the city was supposed to be responsible for rebuilding northeast Oklahoma City. But unfortunately, it took years on top of years for that to occur. And now, we have a great opportunity to really start positive changes along the corridor of northeast 23rd Street. As I told the developers, this is in Ward 7, and the people of Ward 7 will hold you accountable for what happens. I do want to apply the developer for being inclusive, for making sure minorities are involved in this project, which is different than what has happened before. So, I do want to say thank you for involving the community as a part of this redevelopment. The Northeast Renaissance TIF district is more than 1,200 acres. And this is the first TIF project along northeast 23rd Street. I, I did have some concerns early on about this development because of the likelihood that we would have to go into the general fund. But unlike the other TIFs, they have a line of credit. The Northeast Renaissance TIF district does not have a line of credit. So, yes, we're going to have to borrow from within. That's one of the things that, you know, did concern me about, the potential of borrowing from the general fund. But in this case, I believe that if we have to, we need to, again, to spur economic development along northeast 23rd Street. And the simple fact that, you know, this is, we're talking about bringing healthcare services into the inner core of northeast Oklahoma City, I think says a lot. We know that several years ago, the city-county health department put together a study about health in Oklahoma City. It showed that the 73111 zip code was one of the unhealthiest zip codes in our city. So, this, again, brings health services to a community that really needs health services. So, with that said, I strongly support this development. And rest assured, the Ward 7 northeast Oklahoma City will hold the developers accountable for this development.
All right. We have some citizens that have signed up to speak. Now's probably a good chance to hear from them. Quentin Hughes? Good morning, Quentin. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Quentin Hughes, 1105 Northeast 13th Street, Oklahoma City, 73117.
Yeah. Bless everyone that comes up to keep their comments to three minutes or less, please.
All right. Cool. I have a written statement. Excuse me if my teeth chatter, it's a little cold in here. All right. My name is Quentin Hughes, and I'm a proud resident of northeast Oklahoma City, an educator at Douglas Mid High, Northeast Academy, and Star Spencer High School, former board member of the Black Chamber of Commerce and current president of Northeast OKC Renaissance, Inc., where our mission is to be a catalyst for economic prosperity and a preserver of cultural traditions. We achieve this through ethical advocacy, education, and integration of resources. And our vision is to provide a pathway to improve the quality of life for residents of northeast Oklahoma City. I truly see northeast Oklahoma City as a star attraction in Oklahoma City's bright future and believe that our beautiful community has the potential to be a vibrant hub of rich culture and traditions, quality minority-owned businesses, and a thriving local economy. With its unique structure, tenant mix, and proven group of community-minded developers at the helm, the Northeast 23rd and Rhode Island Project offers an innovative model that restores a historic property and, with the architectural standards comparable to developments in the city's most popular districts. In addition to a world, to world-class construction, the project also offers build-out assistance with affordable leases, will continue to cultivate a majority group of minority tenants, and give them equity in development to ensure success, that the success of the project benefits all. If successful, this model could and should be replicated throughout the quadrant. I'm here in support of this project because of its alignment with the vision and mission of the Northeast OKC Renaissance, Inc. organization, as well as my personal belief in the opportunity for this project to be a major catalyst for the Northeast Renaissance and future hub for our community's transformation.
Thank you, Quentin. Haraj Harrell? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Council. Aaron Harrell, 1700 Spring Lake Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. I'm honored to serve as the CEO of the Oklahoma City Black Chamber of Commerce. And I'm originally from, came from California, grew up most of my life from high school on in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. And coming from there and my professional career, one of the things that we've heard time and time again, two general consensus when it comes to northeast side of Oklahoma City. One is that developers probably won't build there. Two, the city or some funding entity probably wouldn't fund it. And most of my professional career, that has rang true. We've seen that time and time again. It's been mentioned before, how several things have happened to try to spur some sort of development, some sort of economic train to get the ball rolling, and it has not happened. Here, we have an opportunity to do something. We have part of that done. We've got developers who have come together, partnered with the city, partnered with the, partnered with the community, have taken the active steps to make sure that the community itself is involved and not just bring in outside people to do that. We've had an opportunity to sit with John and his team, understand exactly where they're going, and understand, we talked about healthcare, 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 and that is a big, big part of this. Healthcare is a huge part of it. But what we're also understanding as a community is this is a cornerstone to do exactly what we've talked about doing for years and years and years. And that's really, really have an opportunity to spur economic growth and economic development in this part of the city. A part of the city that we all know and we can all agree has to have something done. And if that's the case, then we support that as the Black Chamber. We support it with the partners. There's a community behind me that is here in unity, all supporting this project. So, there's one, one piece of this puzzle that has to come together. And it's the people in front of me. It's the council. It's you, looking into your hearts, looking into what you know, we need to do something on this. So, I would ask that we put aside any personal differences. I would ask that we look and say, "Hey, David, you said it perfectly. When we look at something that has to be done, we know it's the first time, but we have to do something. We have to do something to spur this. We have to do something to make this happen." Mayor, you've had a vision for Oklahoma City, and I can promise you, I know, you would tell me, when you first started doing some stuff, there's probably somebody said, "That ain't going to happen." Nothing like that's been done before. This is the same thing. What we want to do is we want to look 10, 15, 20 years from now and say, you know, well, we had an opportunity to make a difference, and we've made that choice to make a difference. Once again, Oklahoma City Black Chamber supports this, we have partners support this, and the community supports this. I ask that you do, too. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Aaron. Michael Washington? Okay.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, they don't matter like a right now. This is all a tear, great plot that's designed by the economic development of Oklahoma City to further destroy the black community by insisting and promoting gentrification on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Some of us are dealing with deeper than that because I'm down here every day with every kind of hat going on. Now then, you want me to believe, Mr. John Pettis, that this all European development, okay, is going to go to promote black business? Why don't you use some of this money you're talking about in this TIF district for the black businesses that's already existing on the northeast side of Oklahoma City? Why hasn't we got to have an outsider come in like we're babies that can't do for ourselves? Now then, you want me to believe that almost, we want to foot a one-third of this bill of a four, of a more than 400, 4 million and 300, 43 million dollar bill, and you want us to put 1 million and 300 up on the northeast side taxpayers' dollars? Are you kidding me, man? You have done nothing but here promote gentrification. You're not trying to pretend with me because I know better. Now, here it is, you got a Mr. Steve, let's see, let me go down here and refer to my records, Steve Mason. Isn't it ironic that he lives in Edmund just like Mr. Russell Perry and others? And you, Russell Perry, Mike Owens, you're being used as pawns to further gentrify our community and move us out so the European community can come in and take over? This is done with the apartment biz on 6th Street and North Stonewall? This is done with the Renaissance development on 36th and Kelly? This is not by accident, but by design. Now, you already stated your, oh, and by the way, the Citizens Bank of Edmund. Isn't that ironic, too? A Citizens Bank of Edmund, a man by the name of Steve Mason of Edmund, who happens to live in the same city as Mr. Russell Perry, who owned majority of a lot of black businesses on the northeast side of Oklahoma City? I think not, sir. Now, you say, a lot of people already say that, well, with the African-American community, that, oh, a lot of investors don't want to come over here. Yeah, they want to come now because they know that this is about to be a European-controlled, providing community now as it is. We're being moved out? And now, this so-called medical district thing, you got one on 10th Street right now. You got one in Midwest City. What do you mean there's a need for more healthcare facilities? You got plenty of them, let's utilize them. Let's give Michael Washington some of this money so he can really build his African-American community if it's for real, and your people not trying to take it from us. But as long as you got this man sitting here, a poor excuse of a Ward 7 councilman, you're going to always have a problem on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. And we're not, as citizens, going to approve of this belligerent, flagrant disregard for the rights of the citizens. Now, again, Kathy, you are into this as well? Now, this man brought up a great, exact, perfect point.
Michael, you need to wrap it up.
I'm getting ready to wrap it up, sir, because, Lord have mercy, I'm long-winded. But let me tell you something else, my friend. I don't hate you, I just don't like the fact of your conspiratory behavior. Now, you got four developers, again, coming from Edmund. Let me, you didn't sit down with me. Why? Because you know I would be in opposition to this. You knew Michael Washington. But let me tell y'all something. This is not the end. And if I have to file a lawsuit, we already know, first of all, it's going to be late. Everybody have a great day. Thank y'all so much, councilman. I will be back, like Arnold Schwarzenegger say, "I'll be back." Thank you.
Kena Oden?
That, there's a strong stigma for the northeast, and it is very difficult to get lending. I try not to partnership or borrow tax credits or things like that, but it's just, it's impossible for someone like me in the northeast. Sorry. Also, you know, you're speaking about taxes. Well, they raised my taxes to $8,000, which it was a $476,000 house. So, you know, if you want to do something in the northeast, you know, this is very important because I can't even get clients to purchase in the northeast because there is a stigma attached, and I think it needs to go away because, and people say, "Aren't you scared?" No, I'm not scared. Everybody is really nice. It's nicer than Midtown, Downtown, Edmond, you know? I love it over there, and it's a great place for families. And I also am trying to start a fundraiser for the Northeast Academy, and I want to raise money for the sports facilities there because they can't even hold sports functions because it's basically dilapidated and unsafe. They can't generate their own funds for their own sports functions, so they have to bust out to other schools. And I've got the foundation agreement started. I'm gonna hold the function if anyone would like to attend and try to build the community there, help the kids, you know? It's important for them to be involved in sports, have a good mentor, and be taught, you know, hard work and perseverance does pay off, and, you know, the community does care. So, that's it.
All right. Kena, thank you. All right, I'll look for a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, if I can get everyone who's in favor of the 1700 Northeast 23rd Street project to please, and I just wanted to show that the community did come out in support of this development. All right, thank you.
You want to make a motion, John? All right, we have a motion in a second. Come. This, oh, it's a good point. This is on the consent docket with a lot of other things. So let me not get ahead of it. Meg wanted to talk about a couple of items that were also on the consent docket. So let's do that before we officially vote on the consent.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question, and I thought I saw Jared here. On our 7N is our resolution approving the allocation of our 1718 HOPA grant with the Homeless Alliance. And I should know the answer to this, Jared. I'm sorry I don't, but why we had such a large carryover from previous years?
First of all, I'm Jared Shade with the Oklahoma City Planning Department. I operate the social services programs for the city. The HOPA grant actually has a three-year time span on it. It used to be with another provider, and the person we had working with the other provider was serving only up to 50% AMI. The program can actually serve up to, that's area median income for anybody who doesn't know. The program can actually serve up to 80%. That program's now been switched over to a new provider who will be serving the up to AMI, so that should reduce that problem. They intend to actually serve a significantly higher number of people, so that should reduce that carryover. The previous provider did have a point, though. They wanted to actually make sure there was always a year's worth of funds in case the funding was discontinued. That really isn't so much of a problem with the HOPA grant, excuse me, because it is a regular federal allocation that comes in on what the CDBG funds and all their other formula grant funding.
Okay. I was not aware that it had a three-year timeframe.
Yeah, it does have a three-year time span. So it's not uncommon that it's got that much rollover, but, well, that much rollover, it's a little uncommon, but it's not uncommon for it to have rollover.
Okay. We're generally accustomed to having to give that money back if we don't spend it.
Yeah, no, we don't have to do that with this.
Startled by the size of it. So thank you very much for the explanation.
Go ahead, any others?
I was just gonna say, there are a lot of other items here that we generally review, and we appreciate so much the work that your Continuum of Care Committee does and staff to make sure we're really using the dollars and federal dollars that we get in the best way we can to help the community.
And our providers too, obviously.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. Second quick thing, Mayor, was on 7AY, number two, and this is our landscape improvement and maintenance agreement with Oklahoma City Beautiful. And I just want to recognize them for their efforts. It's not just in this one location on 16th to 49th Street, but, you know, I think everybody knows they work with partners all over the city to create pockets of plantings and make our city look so much better. And so we're very grateful to have Oklahoma City Beautiful as a long-term partner with us.
Your Honor.
Yes, David.
One item, item AR. It's just an announcement of a contract to make additional sidewalks throughout Oklahoma City with the exception, unfortunately, of Ward 4 and 5. And I do want to congratulate or commend MTZ because I believe that's the same contractor that is putting in the sidewalks along South May Avenue. They're doing it very efficiently, very quickly, and they look great. My question, city manager, if we have a neighborhood that's adjacent to an arterial roadway that wants to add sidewalks along that way, is the city set up to receive funds that could be dedicated solely to that project?
I'm sure we could.
Well, I've got a vision of May Avenue going from now, 134th Street, all the way down to Reno Avenue with continuous sidewalks along that area. There's a one-mile section that's going to prevent that from occurring, and I happen to know some of the people that live in that neighborhood. And perhaps we could convince the city then to put in some sidewalks in a park area that's within that one-mile section, and then we could have a continuous line of sidewalks from 134th all the way down to Reno. So, thank you.
Sounds like a good idea on the surface. Let's look into that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right.
Can you pull AN like Nancy?
Yeah. All right. So this vote will be for all of the items on the consent docket except for item AN, which was the TIF issue that we spent so much time discussing. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion specifically on AN. All right, cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. Thanks, everyone. All right, we'll move along with the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 begins a series of items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 2. The address is 607 Northwest 28th Street. Ed, do you want to take hold of this one?
Did anybody sign up to speak? I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on 9A1? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 6. It's also an ABC issue at 2531 Southwest 59th Street. Meg?
Yeah, similar situation, Mayor. This is to allow low-point beer service in a new restaurant called Taqueria Juarez on 2531 Southwest 59th Street. There were no protests at the planning commission, and they recommended approval. Is anyone here to speak on this? Hearing none, I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 3308 South Anderson Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become an RA2 single-family, two-acre residential district if approved. Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
I was recommended for approval from the planning commission. It's basically a five-acre lot, split down to two and a half. So with that, I would move for approval.
Cast your votes on 9A3. Passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1104 Southeast Grand Boulevard. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would be changed to I1 light industrial district. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? The planning commission did approve it. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 6524 Northeast 122nd Street. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would change to RA2 single-family, two-acre rural residential district. And John, Eric Moody has signed up to speak.
Yes, if we can hear from him at this time. He has requested an emergency, and I want him to explain this particular case and explain why the emergency.
My name is Eric Moody at 4001 Karen Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma, 7313. This is a location where my father's lived for 55 years. It's where I grew up, and he's 85 years old now, and we're trying to do this for his health benefit. He's got to a place where he's still, cognitive skills are still good, he can still get around, but he doesn't take good care of himself. And so through the family discussions, we decided to divide the property and build an apartment under the same roof with us so that he can be a part of our family and we can take care of him as best that we know how. And we're gonna get started as quickly as possible. At 85, every day matters.
And so he has requested an emergency. I know typically we don't really grant emergencies, but in this particular case where the applicant has an elderly father that he's trying to take care of, I am going to ask for the emergency. I know Dr. Shadid, but this is a health-related issue, so I am going to respectfully ask for the emergency. So I'm gonna ask for two things. The first motion will be to approve. The second one will be for the emergency.
All right, I'll take that as a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Then the second one is for the emergency.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 3800 South MacArthur Boulevard. It's currently I1 light industrial, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Since nobody has protested here or at the planning commission, I move for acceptance.
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second, we're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 4. It's at 500 Townview Drive. It currently has a series of zoning designations, and it would becoming a mobile home park if approved. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up?
No.
This is approved. This is really a case of an existing mobile home park. They're just trying to straighten out the zoning on it and bring it into conformance. There were no protesters at the planning commission, and they voted unanimously to approve it, so with that, I would move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 645 Northeast 63rd Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it'd be put into a new PUD if it's approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item actually came in front of us a few weeks ago, and this one is just adding the buffer to Track 2. The residents wanted to ensure that Track 2 stayed green space, and so this is what it does. So with that, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 1001 South Mustang Road. It's currently R1 single-family residential and R3 medium-density multifamily residential, and it'll all be put into a new PUD if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Would the applicant come forward? Sorry to take up your time, but there's a little bit of history involved in here that we want to make sure we get clarified. If you look at the map that he's gonna put up there, you'll see a part of it is a Track And that track is part of this PUD right here. It adjoins a neighborhood to the northwest watch, and a number of years ago, probably as much as 10 years ago, this came into a zoning, and the people, if you notice, between Track 3 and the neighborhood to the north on the far eastern side, there's a cutout there where there's no house shown. And the neighbors did not want connectivity between their neighborhood and the Track 3, which at this time was just an empty field, and still is an empty field, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there was quite a bit of lively debate at the planning commission. The planning commission does not like connectivity cutoff, but with some persuasion, they agreed, as I recollect it, to go along with that. And so I wanted to make sure that when we do this, if I'm correct, and that was carved out and said there will be no connectivity between these two neighborhoods at this location, that that gets handled at a future stage as this goes along.
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This will have to go before the planning commission again for plating purposes. So what we can do is, we can perhaps add a TE and add a provision, this PUD, that the connectivity issue is not decided within the PUD, but rather will have to be decided at the plating phase. Therefore, we can do the necessary research and get with staff to see if, in fact, there were those agreements 10 years ago within the previous zoning case to ensure that if there were, that those agreements are adhered to. So we can do that as we move forward with a future plat.
That being said, is there a staff? Can we handle that in this way, JJ?
Yes, we can address that when it does come back from planning.
And with that stipulation, I move for approval.
We're voting on item 9A9. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
9A10 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 10700 South Penn. It's currently C3 community commercial, and the idea is to put it into a new spud. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone here signed up to speak? Kenny, could I get some clarification on this? Basically, what they're requesting is to convert this into a spud so that this nail salon spa can serve alcohol to its customers? So even though they're not charging for that, they have to get, do they have to get special licensing to provide alcoholic drinks to their customers?
Doesn't matter what you're using. Thank you. Doesn't matter whether it's charging or not, if they're serving alcohol on the premises.
They still have to.
They still have to have the permissions.
Okay, that's good to know because the question has been brought to me on another situation. So charging or non-charging doesn't matter. Okay. Well, there's been no protests. I would recommend approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on a zoning change on 9A10. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A11 is a zoning case in Ward 3, 1106 North Gardner Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family and C4 general commercial district, and there's a new spud designed for it. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? There were no protests at the planning commission, nobody protesting here. I move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 2810 North MacArthur Boulevard. It's currently R1 single-family residential, R4 general residential, and a C3 community commercial district, and they put it into a new spud. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? This particular documentation shows that there were two protest labels, letters at the planning commission, but the applicant did get together with the the Planning Commission, but the applicant did get together with the neighbors, is my understanding, and we do have an agreement that
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And so subject to the stipulations in that agreement that you're in favor of, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A12. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A13 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 5400 East Memorial Road. It's currently double A agricultural, and it would be put into a new SPUD if approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve of this. With that saying, with that being said, I move for approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. 9A14 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 727 North Council Road. It's currently R4, general residential, and it would be put into a new SPUD.
Yeah, this is changing from R4 to a SPUD with a C3 base. There's a lot of multifamily already in the area, so I think this is a good change to add a mix of uses, but still compatible. It's intended to be a storage building, which certainly isn't exciting, but usually those are pretty good neighbors, so. Has anybody signed up? I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9A14. Passed unanimously. 9A15 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 3730 Northwest 166th Street. It's currently in a PUD, and it would be put into a new SPUD if approved. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, this is a rezoning ordinance. It's here today on final hearing. The Planning Commission approved it on August 24, 2017. I'm aware of no protester, so I'd move the item.
All right, we're voting on 9A15. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A16 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 1001 Northwest 71st Street. It's currently I2, moderate industrial, and R1, single-family, and there's a new SPUD planned. Ed?
If no one signed up to speak, I'd move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9A16. Passed unanimously. 9A17 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 3601 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently a PUD, and it would become a SPUD if approved. Larry?
Yes, sir, Your Honor. Thank you. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. Has anybody signed up?
No.
I'd move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, 9A18 is a zoning case in Ward 1. It's currently C3, community commercial, at 7800 Northwest 94th Street, and there's a new SPUD planned. John, James?
Initially, this was a, this had one protester, but I believe the developer has met with them and worked things out. Has anybody else signed up?
No.
No? Okay, well, this has just got an, it's got an I1 base, and it's pretty much surrounded by C3. This is a vacant lot that's been vacant forever, ever since I was a little kid, and all of this other stuff has pretty much always been there, so hoping this zoning change could get it developed. So with that, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A18. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A19 is a zoning case in Ward 2 on 38th Street. It's currently R1, single-family, and it'd be put into a new SPUD. Ed?
If no one signed up to speak, I'd move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A19, and it passed unanimously. Item 9B would clean up some wording on a zoning change, a Scrivener's error to change a use. Is there a motion here on 9B?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Do we need to vote twice? Once on the amendment and once
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll take that motion as the amendment, and now I'll need a motion on 9B2.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, item 9C would, is a name change on Northeast 69th Street. Is there anyone here representing this item? Come on up. Good morning. We'd love to hear from you, and this is, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Jacqueline Bass, 6212 Brookside Drive, Oklahoma City, 73132.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor. Stan Evans, Oklahoma City, 4108 North Harvey Parkway. We're here to speak on our representation for Wildwood Christian Church. She's the chairman of the church. I'm one of the elders of the church. What we're about is, our pastor has been in place for 45 years. He is retired. He has been a leader in the community of Oklahoma City. What we would like to do, and we've taken this through the Planning Commission and all of the proper authorities, is ask that the commission finalize approval of the naming of this church, I'm sorry, the naming of the street. The street is a one-block length. We own property on both sides of the street, so there is no one else that's affected by this.
45 years is a long, long time. Debbie Martin started it 45 years ago, too. Name this little walkway here in front. All right, it sounds like you guys have thought this through, and it's right in front of the church, so it's a one-block area. I'll look for a motion.
All right, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for your effort.
Thank you, Councilor.
Item 9D is a request for a special permit. Has to do with the downtown business improvement district.
Actually, this is the new convention center.
I wondered what this was. So this is to ask for a new convention center to be built in the downtown business district? I had no idea we had a motion like that on here.
Well, it's the special permit that's required.
Really? Okay.
I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right.
Now we can build a convention center.
Thanks to 9D. All right, 9E is up for final hearing today. This has been recommended for denial. It's an ABC issue in Ward 7. The address is 3428 Northeast 23rd Street. And John, two people have signed up to speak.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If y'all would please come up.
Yeah, you both can come up if you'd like. Sherry and, is it?
Emma.
Is it Emma? Hi.
Hi.
Would you, your name and address for the record?
My name is Sherry Leslie. I live at northeast, 709 Northeast 84th Street, Oklahoma City.
Okay.
And this is my mom, Emma Russell, at 1518 Northeast 29th, and my brother Kenan, and my uncle Keith. And we're here because it's a family business that we're trying to get liquor license for. We have, we sell food and everything, and we have did our homework. In other words, we checked out the zoning area and how far we are from a church and, you know, a lot of things like that. And today, we're here to find out why it was denied or if we can be approved, because what we're intending to do is have, you know, it's a family business, but it also opens up a few jobs, not a lot. And if we can get it legalized, like liquor, liquor by the drink, we'll be able to hire security, you know, we'll have someone there to help patrol the area. Now, what I do understand also is that from the past experience, when my mom owned another establishment, that it didn't go very well. But right now, it's the family, it's us, and we want to get it approved and have something, you know, it's on the east side, and I'm not sure how that, this works. This is, you know, like our second time being here, so.
Right. Well, let's get some advice from staff. This was, it was denied at the Planning Commission level. Any insight here?
This is a longstanding, non-conforming beer tavern that wishes to add mixed beverage. The Planning Commission felt like the ongoing efforts to revitalize Northeast 23rd Street, they just had a feeling that adding alcohol to that situation could hamper those efforts.
Is this, has there been a series of complaints? Is there a history of complaints at this location?
It's, for this particular location, no, but the Karen applicant, yes. The Karen applicant owned Boots and Saddles on Northeast 23rd Street, and I know for the least 30 years, every Ward 7 councilperson, along with every major Spring Lake Division, had issues with the applicant, former establishment. And I think that's one of the reasons why, and it's not in the staff report, but the police department did weigh in on this particular, on this particular case. This is something that I just simply cannot support, because it's just right down the street from you all's former establishment that did have a lot of, and first of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate the letter that you all sent to the council. And I know you all are trying, but we just simply, at least I cannot erase the past establishment that you all had on 23rd and Bryant, and this is just probably maybe 1,000, 2,000 feet away from the previous establishment. Because, you know, I live in northeast Oklahoma City, grew up in northeast Oklahoma City. For 30-plus years, the former establishment caused a lot of problems in northeast Oklahoma City. When I first got elected, I shall never forget those calls that I received from neighbors complaining about you all's former establishments, calls from people who are elderly. And I never shall forget the last person who got killed at you all's establishment.
Oh, that was outside.
Well, it was still on the property. And that wasn't the first person who got killed, that wasn't the first person who got shot. We think about how many people who got stabbed, injured at you all's former establishment. I just simply cannot support this. With that being said, I'm going to actually move for denial of this application.
With that being said also, it's the fact that if they did their investigation, a lot of those problems did not stem from the establishment. It came from the club that closed down the street, and they hung out in that particular parking lot. But we didn't have security then. We have plans to have security. Right, okay, yeah, we've been in business a year and a half right now. We have no problems, no complaints, no problem, even the neighbors, there's a few houses in the back, and they are even on board with this. So.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming down.
Okay.
So we have a motion for denial. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. The request is denied.
Can, I just want to ask what we, the reason that we voted was because it would hamper redevelopment along 23rd? Is that, I mean, that's the stated reason in the, is that the reason? I guess I should have asked that before. John, is that, I mean, is it?
That's, that's, that's one of the reasons.
I mean, you said to my
That's one of the reasons. And if I had a whole book, I can, I could actually list a whole book, because the applicant had 30-something years of running a business right down the street that caused a lot of crime to happen in northeast Oklahoma City, will have tried her best to shut down the business, kept, tried, and eventually I was able to get the, along with the police department, we was able to get the establishment to be torn down. But, so, so there's, like I said, there's a long list of things in the staff report. I think should have listed the police department's concerns with this particular applicant, but the staff report, it
I guess, Kenny, I'm just asking, we can, we can deny if we think that it's going to hamper development along a street? I mean, not necessarily for this one, but for the future? Need to keep this on? The, yes. And also, if you note the comments by the police department in there, and also you're adding additional and stronger alcohol at this location, they can already continue to operate a beer tavern that's a legal, non-conforming use. So they're not going to go out of business. Okay. Thanks.
All right, item 9F and G, following the wake of the September 12 elections, have to do with adjusting the sales tax rate on January 1st.
And we will need the emergency.
We will need the emergency.
For the tax commission.
For the tax commission, okay. Is there a motion on 9F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, how about a motion on the emergency for 9F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G.
Hold on.
Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And the emergency on 9G? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H has to do with adjusting the schedule of fees.
No, this is the insulation inspection that we've talked about over the last couple of meetings. This is the final hearing on that ordinance that would require inspections on the insulation going into properties.
Second. Yeah, this is up for final hearing. It's one that the council's heard a couple of times before. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9I, understand we have an ordinance being introduced today?
Right. Rick Wickencamp is here, and this has to do with the administration, the administrative dealing with abandoned, taking houses off the abandoned house list.
Rick Wickencamp, Assistant Director of Development Services. The item would be an amendment to the abandoned buildings ordinance, would authorize that the Director of Development Services or his appointed representative could remove properties from the list administratively. This would shorten the process time it would take to remove a property for owners and title companies and for realtors as well. It also brings it more in line with the process that we have for the unsecured and the dilapidated structures, which currently we can resolve those administratively. Ordinance also has a provision that any order from the development services directed under this ordinance change could be appealed to the city council. So that's pretty much it.
I guess the one thing I'd say, it doesn't make the newspaper every day, but it's really important, the work we do with abandoned buildings, and we've made great progress in this area, and I just want to make sure that this will help speed up the process and make it move a lot more efficiently.
You know, since we've, you're correct. Since we've been doing the abandoned buildings, nobody's ever come down to protest us taking one off the list, so I don't know. That's why we, maybe we'll take this out of the council's hands.
I'd move the item.
All right, we're voting on item 9I. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. So the item is introduced today, a public hearing called for October 24.
Can we have like a periodic report on, because right now, that's kind of the only, that it's on our agenda, that, oh, okay, there's some that are getting taken off. I mean, it's always a good sign to have buildings being taken off, but just kind of update us that how many have been taken off in the last six months or whatever?
We'd be happy to do that.
All right, and another item being introduced today is item 9J, and Doug's here to introduce it. Has to do with the Parks Department.
Morning, Mayor. City Council Doug Cupper, Director of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services. Through our endeavors to make sure that when we authorize special events, that we bring those events to you all for your approval, we want to make sure that the activities are in a healthy way. And through research, we've discovered that the color runs that we have hosted in the past, the majority of the product that is used to paint, the participants have some health issues related to them. You can be allergic to it, you can inhale it, get into your sinuses and your lungs. Also, as it falls onto the pavement and on the grasses, it can wash into our streams and our waterways, and it's not the best environmentally sensitive activity that we have been approving in the past. We are looking to make it an illegal activity for people to use these products and outlaw color runs. Be happy to answer any questions.
So we have, we have one of those in the spring, right?
That's correct.
Is that generally what it is, as I recall? And so is it a specific chemical or a specific type, or are there other options for the group?
We're going to, we're going to review that, but we think that overall, that it becomes an issue for the participants. They may not even know it, let alone the environmental issues.
It's a safety issue on several fronts.
That is what our
Okay.
And it doesn't affect chalk drawings over at the, at the bombing museum in the site where the kids
Seems reasonable. We should probably contact that organization, though, so they have a little bit of a heads up
That's what we plan on
And don't start their planning. Okay. Item just being introduced today. Anyone want to make a motion to introduce it? Item just being introduced today, anybody want to make a motion to introduce it?
The item, second.
All right, item nine J, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. We'll have a public hearing on October 24th, a final vote on November 7th on that issue. Item nine K was stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Item nine L is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine L?
Little items, second.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item nine M is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine M?
Little items, I'd like to speak.
You want to speak about this? All right.
Fourteen thirty, Washington, nineteen, Michael Washington, 2900 North 18th Street. What's that, northeast, fourteen thirty-six, northeast twenty-eighth street, what is that? Is that in his district? It is, oh my God. So what are we talking about with that? Trying to tear it down, secure it, or what?
They're declaring it abandoned.
Abandoned, so how long has it been since y'all tried to contact people? Oh my goodness. How much, how much do you think it'll cost me to buy it?
Have to talk to the owner.
Okay, well, then, based upon that, until I've talked to the owner, I would ask that we hold a table that, so I can see maybe I can fix it up with some of the money that John Pettis, I believe, wouldn't have given. How about that? Okay, now, let me see next, I think I might want that, I might, I might can make a giga pub or something out of, I don't know. Now, which other's in this district, let me see, seventeen eighteen northeast sixteenth street, that look like it's in this district. But what, what's, what's happening? Let's table that too, I might want to try and buy that with some of the money this man might be willing to help bring before y'all's committee. He might want to help me, you know, save that. So let's table that one as well, because I think I might want to try and buy that. And I, do you have the owner's address and all that?
It's on for abandoned.
I'm sorry?
It's on for abandoned.
I know, I swear, do you have the owner's address that owns it? I mean, have you contacted them, they just said I don't want it, or tear it down?
You could probably go across the street at the county courthouse and get the landowners.
Usually, before you tear things down, you would already have the information, that's why I was wondering.
We're not, we're not tearing it down.
Okay, so, so, let's see, eighteen ten North Nebraska Avenue, that look like it might be his district. On or baited, okay, so y'all will straighten that out. All right, it looks like I said, thank y'all for your time and effort, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on nine M, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine N is a public hearing regarding the removal of properties from the abandoned buildings list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine N? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine zero is a public hearing, this would create a street improvement assessment district. It's over on southwest twenty-ninth street, a couple of people have showed up this morning. Jeanette Strickland?
This is my first attendance of this thing, I have total respect for you guys, I'm totally exhausted. I don't know how you guys and ladies absorb all this, I'm just like, my head's just spinning. So I have a lot of respect. I'm the Vice President of the Thornberry Homeowners Association. We've been working with the city to get our streets donated to the city for various reasons. It's been about a year and a half that we've been working for that goal. We've campaigned very hard to go door-to-door, get petitions signed, I think we've got over like sixty percent. So we are for this development to take, to go forward, to better the community for all of us.
Okay, thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you.
And you're next, come on up. Pull that microphone down there, there you go.
Thank you. You know, I'm so scared, I don't know what's going on.
Could you give us your name, your name and your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Winvo, and I live at one zero zero two zero, it's somewhere twenty-three in Yukon. You know, I'm, it's freaking me out, when I don't know what's going on in this room, because this is the first time I go to the place like this. I hear because I received the letter, you know, from the improvement assessment, I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
But I read the letter, and they say, and all the amount, amount they need to be, and they divide all the homeowner, everybody, like the homeowner, have to pay almost four thousand dollars for, to do this project, so I don't know what's going on for the project, and...
Well, we can get you some information, this is a public hearing today, so you've done the right thing to come down and find out a little bit more about it. Why don't we have you speak to our, is Eric probably the best person?
He's coming in. He's on his way.
Okay, but you can speak to Eric offline, you're welcome to go outside and we'll get you more information on this issue. We're not voting on it today, this is just a public hearing for people to come down and get more information or say what they'd like, which is what Jeanette did.
Mayor, there is a resolution created.
Oh, it's both a public hearing and a resolution? Glad you caught that. All right, we are going to vote on this today, so Eric, why don't you come up and explain to her, her unique situation, how much it would cost, and why we go about a street assessment district, and why we work with the neighborhoods to create one?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just so that we're all up to speed, and we'll bring the council up to date too, we do assessment districts at the request of residents, it's not something that the city staff or the council initiate. It's a state statute that provides for it, there's the majority of property owners in an area that wish to upgrade their facilities, and a lot of these would be roads. It does also apply to drainage, it can apply to water and sewer. There's a mechanism that allows the residents to more or less self-impose a tax over a number of years to pay for those improvements, but the benefit is, you can take a private improvement, in this case Thornberry has private streets and private drainage that are the responsibility of the homeowners to keep up with. This is the ability for the owners to one time bring those up to a public standard, and then the city would own it and take care of it from here forward. So what's been on the agenda today is that there's been a lot of work over the last year, there was an application received in August of 2016 from the residents of Thornberry with a, it wasn't quite seventy percent, but it was about sixty-five percent approval, so the majority of residents want to do this. We finished up a report that's on for the council today, the total cost is about four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which includes work to streets and drainage in the neighborhood that will bring those up to the city's standard. Moving forward, if the council were to vote yes today, we will then bid that project to a contractor, so the actual cost will come after the contractor bids the work, the contract's approved, the work is done, and then for the next ten years, the residents that front those streets or front that drainage will pay that amount of money, but it'll be owned then by the city to be taken care of, so there won't be future outlays that would be required of you as a homeowner or others in the area.
And so the letter says four thousand dollars, is that what you're reading on there?
Yes, they like, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollar...
Okay, almost four thousand dollars, and so how would that be paid out, Eric, over the ten-year period?
It will typically show up on your tax bill each year, when you pay your taxes, that amount divided by ten will be, will basically be placed on that bill. The final amount will only occur after we actually bid the project. It's possible the project could come in a little bit less, it's also possible it could come in a little bit more, so that's the estimate today, our best estimate of what it will cost over ten years.
Okay, so you're not going to be billed that entire amount at one time, but over a ten-year period, the tax, the tax rate will total that amount additionally. The advantage to you is that you're going to have a better street than you have before, and the city will then assume the ongoing responsibility of providing maintenance on that property from now on.
So it's mean like, this project will, will to be do, right? And then like, in the ten year, we pay like...
Yeah, you won't need to really do anything, other than your tax bill is going to go up based on the fact that two-thirds of your neighbors have decided to assess themselves this additional amount that is going to improve the streets in your neighborhood, and allow the city to take responsibility for future maintenance the next time the streets wear out.
All the residents in this neighborhood, there's a hundred and twenty-six residents, but all of the neighbor, all of the residents pay the cost.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not just the two-thirds, there's two-thirds that filed the petition, but all of the residents pay. So that everybody's equal.
You know, I, that's one I want to hear, because when I read that letter and I saw that money, it's freaking me out. So why I have that much money to pay for? And I don't really understand all kind of project, that's why...
I understand, it's a little, it's a little complicated, but state law allows your neighbors to impose this district, and I think over a ten-year period, you'll find that it's a good investment for you, at least financially on the, on the value of your home.
So, and I just wait and see, and...
Yeah, well, you don't have to wait long, we're getting ready to vote.
So just as, one of the benefits is, right now, if you, if the council does not vote this, any problem that occurs with the street, the homeowners have to figure out how to make it the repair, not the city. And if there's a problem that occurs with the drainage, the city can't help, the homeowners have to figure out any problems with the drainage. After this, it becomes the city's responsibility to maintain the streets and the drainage.
And Eric, this would show up on her tax bill, not this year, but not until next year.
I wish I knew how that worked, I just don't know.
That's right.
Yeah, it couldn't come on for eighteen, because those are, those bills are just showing up.
Okay.
So it would be, it'll be a year before you would see the first four hundred dollars, if it's four thousand dollars, it will be four hundred dollars a year for ten years.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll see that next year, will be the first one. Okay?
All right.
So we can pay for ten years, so that's be okay to me, you know, I mean, like, four thousand dollars for one time, I cannot find that much money to pay for.
You're not having to pay on a one-time basis.
Yes.
It'll be, it'll be broken up into ten yearly payments on your tax bill. Okay?
So, if that's happen, it's good for our neighborhood in ten years.
It's my opinion, this is in your best interests, and it will increase your property values long-term, whether you choose to live there for ten years or not, it's a good investment for you long-term to get the city to take over the maintenance of the streets.
Yeah, and I got another question, look like after ten, after, in ten year, look like I move away, I don't live that neighborhood anymore, so that money, money I still pay on my tax until the end of term for ten years?
Whoever owns the property will have to pay those taxes, so if you sell the property, you won't have to pay anymore.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thanks for coming down. All right, do we have a motion and a second on nine O?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine P is an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Morning Mayor and Council, Aubrey McDermid, Planning Director. Wanted to give you some background about most recent comprehensive plan amendment to Plan OKC, the city's comprehensive plan. This comprehensive plan amendment is for an area in Ward One, it's the southeast corner of Britton and Mustang Road. We had a concurrent application for rezoning come into the department requesting to take this from double A to R1 to do a single-family subdivision. This area, if you'll go to the next slide, it's a generalized area of our comprehensive plan land use map, where you can see where the subject site is, and then the next slide shows a blow-up of that. So what this shows is that the comprehensive plan designated this area as urban reserve, which means that full services are not available today, but are within, in urban development within the future. The development across the street from this has come in, since the comprehensive plan was adopted, and extended services over for a single-family subdivision, so the applicant felt that it was time and accessible to be able to provide full services to this site. So as you can see, the flats that have come into the north side of Britton Road have put those services within the required connection distance of within a quarter of a mile, in this case, just directly across the street. If you'll go to the next slide, this is the consideration, is that when we open up the urban reserve areas for full development, we look at all services that are provided to the site. Of course, this site can connect to city water and sewer, and as we develop our diagrams to show emergency response, it's kind of a bubble diagram, you can see the colors that go from red to less than desirable response time, yellow meaning kind of on the edge of urban and rural response time, and green meaning full urban response time. Those bubbles kind of extend up to the boundary of Britton Road, but as you can see, that's an arterial, so the urban response time for fire is really considered to be probably a, an urban response acceptable response time. So if you'll go the next slide, with the extension of that water and sewer, it takes it to a different consideration level for urbanization. It was originally designated as urban reserve because that entire parcel was undeveloped, and that entire parcel was not in the quarter-mile of city water and sewer service at that time. It is within a sewer shed that can be served, and we knew that eventually it would come to that direction. And so what we do when we, when we do our analysis and provide considerations for changing it, is look at the prevailing development pattern, which is urbanizing directly around that property, and the fact that it is efficient to serve at this point in time. The next slide, Planning Commission did consider this case, there were no protestants, Planning Commission unanimously approved the comprehensive plan amendment on September 14th, and we're here requesting that council receive the amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'd move the item.
All right, we're voting on item nine P, cast your votes, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aubrey. Item nine O, or nine Q, has this been, has this been polled, Jim?
Yes.
Been stricken?
Stricken.
Okay. And item nine R, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
So we can, we can go ahead and pass the resolution on nine R, is there a motion? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine S, understand we do need executive session, so a motion to move that to executive session would be in order?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine T, understand we do need executive session, is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine U, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item nine V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine V? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item ten A is claims recommended for approval, is there a motion here?
Move the item, second.
Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item eleven is a resolution that would pay Councilman Pettis' expenses when he attends the National League of Cities Conference in Charlotte in November.
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item nine twelve, or actually, item twelve is a city manager reports.
There are more, Council?
Of course there are. Mark, you have anything? All right, John? Meg? All right, David?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Saturday, an organization called Convoy of Hope had an event over at Woodson Park, they provided groceries, shoes, healthcare products, services for individuals in need. They gave away over a million dollars' worth of products and services during Saturday. One of the services that struck me, because I just didn't think about it until walking around the area, was free family portraits. So unfortunately, you know, we take those things for granted, but there are families who just aren't able to afford things like that, and they had about fifteen different photographers there providing portraits, they had haircuts, health screening. So I want to thank Convoy of Hope, along with many, many churches throughout the area, who, whose members and staff partnered with them to help provide these services. And then the second issue, I'd like some feedback from the council on, and it relates to our, to the city's practice of issuing noise permits. So this weekend, in Ward Five, a noise permit was granted, and we got over five complaints, one was a couple of miles away, and it just struck me why we would allow individuals to, you know, generate noise in a manner like that. So if we could get maybe a report, Jim, in a future council meeting as to the history and how many of those noise permits we issue a year, because it's hard for me to understand why we would allow someone a permit to make noise that's disruptive to their neighbors, even in this instance, two miles away. I mean, I don't think we should ever disregard our neighbors' need for some level of quietness to sleep, and why these permits are allowed to go on until 11:00 PM. My thought is, there are plenty facilities throughout the city to host these kinds of act- kinds of activities. Or, if you want to have them at home, just be responsible and respective of other people and keep the noise within the proper limit. There's no notification to the neighborhood when we issue these permits, so they don't, the neighbors don't have any idea that some event's going to take place. And they're, they can call the police, but these individuals, as a result of that permit, are exempt from any enforcement action.
What was it, David? What were they doing?
A party. I mean, it was like a birthday party. And granted, I understand certain birthdays are kind of important, anniversaries. I mean, I get that. I'm just saying, we've got plenty of places to host those kinds of events. There's no need to be disruptive to your neighborhood. And in this particular example, you know, the noise carried two miles away. I can imagine what it was like, you know, right next door to that place, and nothing can be done. So... Yeah, well, okay. But again, and I'd also say, why do we allow it to go till 11:00 PM? For some people, that doesn't seem like a late time of the evening. But for some of us, as we get older, that becomes, you know, a fairly late period. And, you know, you could schedule it, say, from 7:00 to 10:00. That's three hours, plenty of time to go around, you know, talking to everyone, asking how the family is and all that, and then move on. So, I just would like for the council, I mean, maybe I'm looking at this incorrectly, but I would like for the council to look at this practice. And if nothing else, assuming, you know, we don't have like 100 that we issue a week, have these permits come before the city council, just like we do on these special events, and then we can decide, is it necessary? Is it appropriate? Again, the concept just seems strange to me. So...
Do they have speakers or a band, or?
Yes.
All the above?
Yes, yes. And again, why not go to some location, some facility that is designed to host that kind of activity? Okay, and I agree with that, Meg. All I'm saying, if you want to have it at your house and avoid the expense, just be respectful of your neighbors. There's no need for us to grant them carte blanche, you know, ability to just crank that noise up as much as they feel like it. You know, I...
We'd be happy to prepare a report for you and give you some history on it. This is a complex issue that we've been dealing with with a number of years. The present permit process that we have works most of the time. We don't get very many complaints on it. That being said, I'm sure there are some people that are inconvenienced from time to time. Rick Smith and MT Berry have been all over this for a number of years, and we'd be happy to get your report. I don't know how many we do a week. Beverly, in your office, has actually issued the permits, or did, I'm not sure. Does she still? That could change? We've been looking at the processes.
Yeah.
But there are people that do want some amplification from time to time, and sometimes they're neighborhood parties that happen out there. And, you know, all people don't celebrate on the 7:00 to 10:00 schedule that's out there some...
Yeah, I know, but they should look at that. I mean, us accountants go to great training to speak low, slowly, in a monotone manner. And if we can do that, it's hard to understand why other people can't.
All right.
And to piggyback, I understand, because I have the Zoo Amphitheater and now Lost Lakes. And so, from time to time, I get those complaints about noise going past 10:30, 11 o'clock. And, you know, I hear the Zoo Amphitheater every time they have a concert. But who do I call to complain when I'm the councilman? So, I tend not to complain, but my neighbors complain, and they complain to me. So, I do understand where you're coming from, David, in regards to noise permits in outdoor facilities. There is a need, but I think when it comes to notification and a couple of other things, I think we might need to tighten that up just a tad bit, because from, like I said, from time to time, I will get those complaints dealing with the Zoo Amphitheater and Lost Lakes. Like I said, every time there's a concert at the Zoo Amphitheater, I hear it. Whether I want to hear it or not, I hear it, which, you know, that means the city getting some type of sales tax from the zoo. So, I can't complain too much, but yet, again, other people, they do see that as an issue.
All right, Tom?
Well, excuse me, I just would like to comment on that particular point. People should understand if they move close to the Zoo Amphitheater, and "close" is relatively speaking, that they may encounter that. But when you have a situation where you do it out of your home, kind of unexpectedly, anyway. Thank you.
Good. Larry? Ed?
I don't want to get into the IMSA lawsuit, but one quick question on the finances. My understanding is that we have built up a reserve from the utility fee to ensure or to protect against future increases. Would it be accurate that that reserve is about $5 million? And would it be accurate that IMSA can tap that reserve to pay its legal fees? And if anybody, if you don't know, you...
There's reserve, yes. We do have the fees in place. We do have a reserve to offset future increases in cost. It's several million. I don't know. Is it...
Right. I don't know that it's $5 million, but I think it's near that. I don't know the exact number. And yes, I believe in something we'd have to work through with legal, but that funding is there to be able to pay IMSA for the services. So, if there were something where they were charged or had a settlement of some type, I would think that we would be able to use that to pay our portion of that, because of the fact that the city and Tulsa are the sole beneficiaries.
The fact that Tulsa's city council just turned down increasing the transport rate would not increase, we just have to pay the Western Division's responsibility. We're not responsible for it.
That's what I was thinking. It's...
Our portion of the Western Division.
Right.
Our portion of the Western Division. But that could come out of our reserves, that $5 million.
I think it gets to a legal question.
We probably ought to look at the org.
You need a legal opinion on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Can you do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
James? All right. Aubrey McDermid is here to talk to us about wayfinding in downtown.
Morning again, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermid, Planning Director. Wanted to give you a quick update on a project that we've been working on in conjunction with Downtown Oklahoma City Public Works Department, Parking and Transportation Department, and the Planning Department. To give some guidelines to developing a wayfinding plan, we would like to start in downtown Oklahoma City. So, we felt it was important to put some guidance and a framework around where signs go, who would get a sign, how they would look, how they could be constructed. Go ahead. So, we established some goals for this process. And really, I think we all understand that the goals are, we want to help people get to where they need to go in our downtown. As our downtown is building out and developing, we just want people to get there efficiently by either car or by walking. So, we want to improve the flow of traffic and promote people walking downtown, making it easier for them to get there. And then, a primary goal is that we don't increase sign clutter, that through our downtown wayfinding signage plan, it's something recognizable by people once they figure out where to look to get this directional signage, something that's clean in its design, it's easily readable from a distance, easily installed and maintained, and easily updated by the city. So, we established within the scope of the project that it's going to start in downtown first. The area that it would be bounded by is 13th on the north, I-40, Lincoln on the east, and Western on the west. And it establishes a few different types of signage. One larger type of signage that would be placed directly below the street name would be for vehicular traffic, to try to point people in the direction of where they're making a decision to make a turn. Then, below that, a smaller-scale sign closer to the pedestrian would be a black and white pedestrian sign, pointing them in the direction and giving them the distance of the walk to that destination. Also, in some locations downtown, we may be able to locate a mid-block sign to help people try to find the entrance to certain parking garages, so that they can look for that sign when they get close to their destination and not miss it as they're coming up on that turn. So, we established some criteria. So, this is to build a wayfinding system, not only in downtown, but in the future. If this wayfinding system is funded, we could increase this to other areas of the city. But in order to do that, we are not going to be installing signs for every business and every destination. They needed to fit a certain type of destination. And those would be character districts or special districts, government institutions, cultural institutions, our transportation and major parking facilities, and our entertainment facilities. And we categorize these destinations into tiers, and the tiers help us dictate how far out we start to provide signage to help people find those destinations and how many signs would be placed at key intersections. So, the first tier is our major destinations. These are nationally-recognized destinations that receive over 200,000 visitors a year. They're open year-round, and the majority of those visitors are not local. The second tier would be a regionally-recognized destination of over 25,000 visits a year, and they're open at least nine months a year. And then, the third tier is solely for pedestrians only. These are locally-recognized and primarily accessed by walking. Walking. So, our first pass at creating some signage would include these different destinations throughout our downtown, categorized by the different tiers. The good thing about this system is that these are simple names that are easy to read from while you're traveling. And through time, as our destinations grow in downtown, we can add to the system, or if names change, we can replace those signs easily. So, we also established some guidelines about the placement of these signs. The Tier 1 signs, which are the large nationally-recognized, highest-level tier, we would start providing directional signs within one and a half-mile radius. So, this would be potentially even, as you get off the highway, trying to guide them into our downtown to find those destinations. The smaller-scale destinations, within about a half-mile radius of that destination, you'd start to see the wayfinding signs at key intersections. And then again, with the pedestrian signs, for those very large destinations, you may be walking further from a parking garage or from where you might be dining for an evening event to a facility that's within a 10-minute walk of that. As you get closer and closer to the destination, those pedestrian signs would dictate whether you're in a five or a 10-minute radius of the destination. So, we've created some maps, and this is based on vehicular travel patterns and the ability of our road network to accommodate trips, and looking at key points where people will have to make a decision on where to turn. So, the vehicular signs would be located at these intersections. These are proposed intersections for that, knowing that we are going to have to go out and do some field testing and make sure that those signs are placed at the best intersection for that. So, these may adjust a little bit, but that's something that we intend to do as we install signs. The next level would be the analysis we've done on the best placement for those pedestrian sign locations throughout downtown. Okay? And then, we've established guidelines of where on the street poles these are placed. This allows people to make an instant notification of the signs, looking in the same location, placed a certain distance below the actual street name on the same pole as the street pole. So, you can kind of see how you could have multiple destinations signed with the blue blades that point in the direction of your turn that you would need to be making. And then, below that, a certain distance on the pole, you would see where the black pedestrian signs would be located. We've also established some guidelines about how many signs would be too many signs for one pole. We do not want to contribute to sign clutter in the downtown, and we also want people to be able to scan that list of destinations and read it easily while they're traveling. So, we've established a maximum for the number of signs per pole. The next one also shows where those mid-block poles could be placed. We don't want to create additional poles in the downtown areas. We want to use existing infrastructure. This is a very neat system that can be created in the city's sign shop. It is strapped around the pole to match the pole, so it's very clean, very minimalistic. So, we are presenting this project. Public Works was able to identify a source of funds to be able to fabricate these signs. So, we are letting you all know. We presented to the Downtown Oklahoma City Board. Next month, we'll be presenting to the Bid Board, Planning Commission, and then the Design Review Committees and Commissions. So far, we've had a very, very positive response. This is something that we've been working on for a long time, trying to elevate people's ability to travel around our downtown easily. And as we studied other cities and their wayfinding systems, we feel like the one that we've developed has taken the best parts of what's worked well in other cities, and I believe that we're replicating, or we're doing something other cities will want to replicate. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. And we also have Eric Winger, and we have Corey Hubert from the Transportation and Parking Department.
Will we be doing this internally, or hiring a consultant?
It's completely internal. The plan was created completely internally with the help of Downtown Oklahoma City, and we'd be fabricating these internally, maintaining them with our existing city staff.
Okay. I also know Amtrak provides signage, and it's their specific logo if we're interested in using them to help us locate their specific signs. If we want to do our own, that's fine, too. I just know that that's available. Any other comments or questions for Aubrey?
Mayor, just a quick comment, I think. You know, European cities do this a lot. It's great, and I really applaud you for kind of trying to clean it up and get rid of as many things as we can. Another tiny idea, and they do this a lot in New York City, where they've got streets named, they've got weird names for people or for individuals, they double-hang the street sign. And the place I'm thinking that's very confusing downtown is Robinson. It's called Thunder Alley or Thunder Street for a block. It's called Ron North Drive for a block, and then it's called Robinson, all where people are coming from out of town and driving. And I think that could be an area where you might want to be consistent with it be Robinson, and then use a second sign that said Ron North Boulevard or Thunderson. Just an idea.
Eric and I have talked about that.
I would just share that this is something that Aubrey and I have discussed previously, and I think as we kind of work out the graphics on how that would work on the existing signage system that we have, we would like to propose a solution like that for that and other streets that have dual names, or at least have a historical name, and then have been renamed. But yes, so I think that's probably something we could provide in the near future.
Okay. Larry?
Question, Eric. In your comments just a minute ago, you said our existing signage. A number of years ago, we hired a contractor, a consultant, to do a signage study, which got signs that we've got today. Is any of that going to be used in this new study, or are we just throwing it out?
So, we would be abandoning the old signage system. So, when the signs were previously placed, the previous wayfinding signage, a lot of the streets had not been converted to two-way the time that those signs were installed. So, we had some that were pointing in the wrong directions. It was really a system that kind of dated itself with our revitalized downtown. We refer to those as the older blue and gold signs. It's possible there may be a few of those that are still in the inventory. Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about a different one.
Are you talking about the citywide inventory that we did, or are you talking about the old wayfinding?
I'm talking about the signs around to the director, to City Hall.
Okay, those were the 2,000-bond issue signs.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. You're right.
Okay. But that system's going to be replaced. And this is a system, those signs were hard to update. We had to go out for specialty consulting to get the fonts created and some of the sign blanks made. What Aubrey has presented today is a system that we have the capability of completely doing in-house. So, if there was a name change, damage to a sign, something would happen to it, we could immediately replace it.
Okay. All right.
I have a design critique on the, one of the earlier ones. The fonts that were used in the blue and the black were different. So, just making sure that they're going to be, that they have that one.
I think that is a product of the PowerPoint or the font that was used in the report, but they, we did select a font that was based on like legibility and ease of reading and making it consistent.
Helvetica.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, Councilman Greenwell has asked that we do a update on internet, internet sales tax. And Craig Freeman and Jane Abraham are going to present that this morning.
Thank you. Yeah, so we wanted to just take a little bit of time to update you on the impact of internet sales in the city. I'll talk just briefly about the impact directly, and then Jane will talk about some of the legislative issues. You all know that sales tax in Oklahoma City is a significant source of revenue. It's our largest source of revenue. And the general fund alone, sales tax is 52% of the revenues that we have to provide services to our citizens. If you combine use tax with that, and the use tax is really just sales tax on goods purchased outside of the state, brought into the state for use, you combine that with sales tax, it's 62% of our general fund budget. So, it's something that has a significant impact when we're in a situation where we lose sales tax as a result of internet sales. tax as a result of internet sales. Data taken from the U.S. Census Bureau, no, you were ahead of me. Data taken from the U.S. Census Bureau shows that online retail sales have been increasing significantly. And in 2016 alone, it was 15%. And we were looking back, and really, it says over the last eight years is 10% growth, but that incorporates kind of the back end of the recession, and that had a significant impact on online sales, just like it did on all retail sales. And so, if you just look in the last several years, it's probably averaged closer to 14% to 15%. That type of growth just means it's an indication that we're going to continue to see this growth, and more and more of those sales are going to move away from sales tax that we receive. And so, it's something that's really important to us. Also, another item that was from the Census Bureau was that online sales made up about 8% of total sales, total retail sales. And there's other reports that take that same data and then back out some sales, like fuel sales, that are rarely purchased online. You back those out, it's more like 12%. So, the electronic forms of purchases are becoming the norm, particularly the younger generation. It's just the way that they conduct business, that they purchase online. And we're going to see that continue to grow, so it becomes a bigger issue. You're getting to the place where all sales, really, that were traditionally purchased in stores are now being purchased online. Media sales, like games and movies and books and things of that nature, software are now downloaded. You can purchase even groceries online now. And so, that is really changing the way that people do business, and so it's becoming a bigger issue for us. There are a lot of things that are changing at the same time. We do see that with those changes, we've estimated right now that for the city, the impact is about $10 to $15 million, and it's a wide range, I know. And that's each year. It's difficult to nail down exactly because of the fact of more and more brick-and-mortar stores are moving to online sales, and they're getting into that business as well. So, we are capturing some online sales, sales tax, because more brick-and-mortar stores that do have a nexus here in the state of Oklahoma are doing online business. You all are aware that the state signed an agreement with Amazon, and we're now receiving sales tax from Amazon. They actually remitted as use tax. So, that, those changes that are going on have an impact on what amounts that's affecting the city. But we do see that as this is going to continue to grow, and projections are for online sales to outpace in-store sales for the long, you know, in the future, in the near future for sure, and going forward, we expect that to continue. So, it's something that's going to be an important issue for us. And really, it's just an issue that as the way that people transact business and make purchases has changed, we need the tax system to modernize, to keep up with this change in the way people do business. And so, that's something that Jane is going to talk about. It's a federal issue that needs to be addressed at the federal level. There are several pieces of legislation that are out there. And so, Jane will give us a quick update on what legislation is out there currently.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs. Regarding the legislation that's out there, not much has moved on this recently. There is a Senate bill and a House bill. The Senate author, Senator Enzi, has essentially announced that they're waiting for the House to act first, because the Senate did pass a bill in 2013. So, and the House never took that legislation up. So, their thought is that it should really go through the House first, and then they'll deal with it in the Senate. And there's also, in the meantime, a new bill has been introduced that would also lock the status quo in place as it regards e-fairness and internet sales tax. So, all of these things are sort of happening on the federal level, but there's not a lot of action connected to those particular pieces of legislation at the current time. What has happened recently, like in the last month, the South Dakota Supreme Court rejected essentially a state-level bill that would have overturned the Quill decision. And so, they rejected that and sent it to the U.S. Supreme Court. And should they take up that legislation, that will then address the base Quill decision that was put in place in 1992. So, we don't know if the U.S. Supreme Court is going to take that up yet, since the previous case just happened. But that's kind of the latest development on the federal e-fairness issue. Essentially, what's been happening over the last several years is that states have been doing their own, chipping around the edges with e-fairness. For example, Colorado had their law upheld that would require online retailers to let customers know that they may owe X amount in tax. The state of Oklahoma passed similar legislation, and so that that is in effect now, that online retailers are to let customers know that they may owe X amount in tax. Also, there have been several pieces of legislation at the state level in Oklahoma to encourage a voluntary compliance among e-retailers, to remit sales tax to the state. So, there's been kind of state-level issues that have happened over the last several years, but really, a federal solution is required.
Jane, for those watching, is the Quill decision the one that says, "Without Nexus, you don't have to pay"? Because that's taxation without representation, basically.
Yes, that is correct. And that decision came down in 1992. And at that time, the internet was really in its infancy. If, you know, there wasn't a lot of retail transaction taking place. And it dealt with catalog sales and sales over the telephone, that you couldn't collect sales tax on those things. And that has just been interpreted to then apply to all remote transactions. That is correct.
Where's Oklahoma's legislative contingent on the Marketplace Fairness Act?
So, Mark Wayne Mullins is actually one of the co-authors on the House bill. In terms of the, you know, we visit with them on it on a regular basis. There's not really anything for them to vote on right now, unless they were to become co-authors on the legislation. So, you know, we get varying responses as far as them understanding our position and why it's a concern for cities.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mark Wayne Mullins is opposed to?
No, he's a co-author on the House bill to put e-fairness in place.
Okay.
Ed, my personal opinion is that they're reluctant to support it. And it's that anti-tax sentiment that carries over to this issue. And I would ask that we consider a resolution from the city council, a letter to them, to explain to them, it's not a new tax. It's not an additional tax. It's a tax currently owed by the purchasers of those products in the form of use tax. And it just does, and most of them will say, "Well, it's a state enforcement issue." Well, the Oklahoma Tax Commission cannot go out and send agents to a home and try to collect $100 worth of use tax and pay somebody twice that amount to collect it. It doesn't make sense. So, what I think we could suggest to them is, one, to help educate them so that they know it's not a new tax, the tax liability already exists. And it's shifting the collection of that tax, and there's numerous examples to where that's already occurring. For example, liquor sales. The tax is collected at the very first sale from the distributor to the wholesaler, and it covers all the tax down to the various levels, ultimately to the retail sale of liquor. Cigarette tax is done the same manner, just because it's easier from an enforcement standpoint to collect the tax initially at this top level. And you see it, again, in certain industries where they're concerned about collection of the tax. And you certainly see it in less-developed countries, because otherwise, that tax just won't get collected. So, all we could say is that we're just shifting that responsibility for the tax to be collected at the company level, and not put the responsibility back on the individual purchaser. And that would solve the problem. They could do it with federal legislation, it'd eliminate any challenges. And it's a very simple solution. And we don't have the slide, apparently, but there was a slide that was shared with members of the council a few weeks ago that showed that the loss on a statewide basis. Craig, can you help me? Was it a half a billion?
Yes.
So, a half a billion dollars of lost revenue to the states over a five-year period. It's that significant. And that's just at the state level. I don't know if it included the municipal side of the tax, so double that. So, you're easily talking about a billion. The tax is owed. It's not being collected. There's a solution. Our congressional delegation refuses or fails to understand the importance of this and how it's impacting us. And so, that's why I'd suggest we consider preparing a letter that just helps them understand an easy solution, a solution that's already occurring in many industries, to address this problem. And, I mean, they're representing us, but yet, they're not doing a very good job as it relates to this item. Thank you.
Just a personal story. I've purchased two things on Amazon over the last couple of weeks, and they are definitely collecting taxes. And it definitely has not deterred me from buying online, because it still is so much easier than anything else. So, I don't know if that's an argument for or against it, but certainly, the agreement that the state has gone into with Amazon seems to be working.
Amazon is paying sales tax on primary purchases from Amazon. They are not paying sales tax on third-party purchases.
Right. I think both of mine were through, actually, Amazon.
All right. Jane, thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
There's actually a national group in town this week discussing this item. They're gathering in Oklahoma City at the Renasans. All right, citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.